Oui. Okay, we're on.
Yes, we are.
We will start the meeting. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty then. Got a lot to do tonight. We will start with manifest.
Did everybody get to look at it?
I did. Ben?
Okay, I make a motion to approve the accounts payable for 11/14 and the payroll for 11/15.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes.
The ones from last meeting?
Public and non-public.
Yeah, I had some on the last meeting.
It was long.
Yep, I'm gonna find it.
Did you send your corrections in?
Uh, no, I did not.
Would you like me to wait for a motion?
No, yes, please wait. Ben, I have them. Okay, line 31, I'm sorry, line 39? No, you know, actually, John and I talked about this, and I think what we need to do is start, rather than sending emails back and forth and back and forth, we need to discuss all of our edits in a meeting. And I know that puts a little more work on you, but one of the challenges I have, what's that? It's fine, keep going. One of the challenges that I have is if somebody makes changes and sends them to you and you send them back out, I don't see what those changes are.
Well, I put them at the top of the email. So that's what I've done.
We used to do them in meetings like this, and I think I'd like to get back to that. Because, again, there have been times that they've come out and I haven't seen what other changes have been made.
So can I ask a suggestion on this?
Yeah.
Changing should only be, what we discuss here when we do this should be changing to wording. We don't need to go on, you forgot to put a period there, you forgot to put a comma.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
We ain't going to that extreme.
Well-
But it's too time-consuming. When you go to four pages, and I think we all get the gist of-
That's, that's fine.
If we're missing a period-
Yeah, that's fine.
There should be an explanation point. I don't think we have to be-
No, that's fine.
I said in too many meetings in the past where we used to do that, and it was-
Line 95 is in four points, five versus six.
Got it, and it just-
Yeah, 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 no, I agree with that, that's fine.
Too many other important things to discuss.
I think that's fine.
But the corrections to make sure that they're worded correctly, that's a different story.
That it represents accurately.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, for example, on, and I think they have to be enough of representative of what the meaning is. For example, on line 39, 37, 38 says, "Forty-two hundred plus six years of interest will be paid back for impact fees, will be returned as the school addition was not approved." And then line 39 says, "There are four employee slots plus director for public works." And then 40 is Mr. Scruton said they took the Democratic meetings, blah, blah, blah. So I don't, if I was a citizen reading that, I don't know what, there are four employee spots plus director of public works. What's that mean? What does that relate to?
Can we do a, okay.
But I-
No, I got you.
Yeah.
In the highway department?
Probably.
That sort of potential.
What's that?
That sort of potential.
It's not how, it's more, I think she's going on for the clarif-, sorry to speak for you-
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Just the clarification of how, when you're reading it, you know, I was reading it to like a story, so you know what's going from chapter to chapter, you know, paragraph to paragraph, instead of being broken out as, they're very important line items, and I'm happy that they're listed, and that's great, that they should be, but just a little bit more narrative needs to be, that's, that's all we're, I guess, that you're saying, right?
Yep, exactly.
But I mean, the majority of it, I thought was-
Yeah, I'll be honest, I had one more, but I can't find the document where I, oh wait.
Not too bad, over 175 lines.
No, for sure, for sure.
I think it's pretty good.
For sure. Oh, the other one was on line 47, and again, this is kind of like, in the same context, right? So line 47 where it says, "A public hearing RSA 31:95-B," and then it goes on to say, "Ms. Danus, explain the public hearing," and then Ms. Campioli asked about people knew about, how they knew about the hearing, blah, blah, blah. It doesn't indicate what the purpose of the hearing was. So what I would like to see is on line 47 where it says, "Public hearing RSA 3195-B regarding the acceptance of unanticipated funds." So that at least people who are reading it know what the purpose of the hearing was. And sorry, I had one more.
Do you want to table the minutes and put them out?
What's that?
Do you want to table the minutes, or are you doing this now so we can approve the minutes?
I'm doing it now so that we can approve with changes.
I think that's a good deal.
Okay.
Okay, so, question to John and Ben, how do you guys want to handle this moving forward?
We're talking about the corrections?
How do we want to handle making edits going forward?
Well, this is always a busy time of year for us, you know, getting into the budget season and getting into the election and what have you. Felt the email was probably better, but I certainly understand your thought process in regards to not seeing some of the edits. Though I had no issue seeing whatever she puts up there, and I can kind of, you know, see them both. I just think going through the edits in a meeting is just going to draw out the meeting that much longer.
Lorraine, I'm not picking on you at all.
No, no, it's fine. I was actually, I mean, he's gonna find, he has someone that's gonna start doing the minutes from the video.
Okay, so-
If you want to do the video now, I, I mean, I'm certainly happy to scoot on out of here as well, so if he has someone to do, or I'll do this meeting since I can't.
I did not have anyone to do the selectmen's meeting. This was just the planning board and budget committee.
All I'm saying is that, like, I'm looking at the email for the 10:31 minutes, and it says, "Please find the updated minutes with John's additions," and I have no idea what John's additions were.
His additions.
Okay, well, I have no idea what those additions were.
Well, I didn't make any.
So, that's, I just, I think we have to be a little more transparent about what edits everybody's making.
No, no, I totally get it done, but again, in the interest of saving time, though, because we're in that busy time of the year, you know, it did seem to work online. But I'm not opposed to doing it in this form either, it's just gonna make for a much longer meeting. There's a lot of corrections.
It is what it is.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it.
No, I want to make clear, I was hoping that you would continue doing the selectmen's minutes.
Yeah, I didn't realize you weren't going to be doing them, Lorraine.
No, I've been talking about, I've been talking with Kelly about it, so, yeah, no, I think this is, I'm-
Kelly has too much of a full plate to be doing it, right?
Well, I don't think she was asking Kelly to do it.
No, I mean, going forward, if we, if she-
Kelly can't do the minutes.
All right, let's table the minutes, if you don't mind.
Nope.
Then we'll talk about what the process is going to be. Lorraine, is this your last night?
Whatever he needs me to do.
Okay, thank you. All right, boards and assigned committees.
Well, you attended the last budget meeting?
I did attend the last budget meeting. Not a lot at the budget meeting, predominantly the school talked a little bit about their default budget. The budget committee is looking for CIP information, they do want to meet with department heads, and, and I think that was it of significance for us. Anything from planning?
Yeah, we had a meeting. We finished up the Fernald subdivision, which was just a three-lot subdivision on the lake, and then we actually had a conceptual for Kevin Bassett on the lake off Dolph Dam Road. And then we also talked about Moore's Road subdivision, which we're still working on that one, because there was still stuff and studies that needed to be done. So the budget, excuse me, the planning board is going to have a workshop on Wednesday, which I won't be able to attend, but that's okay, because I have another meeting to go to. But it's a workshop to catch up on some things, and then we have another, again, busy schedule. Our meeting's been averaging three hours every single time because of the amount of plans and everything that's coming through, so. And then we did talk about, actually, a big discussion, you know, on, I just forgot the name of it, master plan.
Right.
Because we are well overdue from our 10-year, the state says you should have a master plan done every 10 years, and I think we're approaching year 12 now, so we are overdue for a master plan. But I sat on the planning board back when we did have the master plan, and we actually used some outside help that we paid for, because it's a six-month process in order to do a master plan, or longer. It's not something that you just sit at two meetings and take care of.
Right.
It's, anybody that's been in town that's worked on a master plan can tell you that it's a time-consuming process in order to get, you know, but we have a good one in place, so we could probably use a lot of, you know, the format that we already have. It's going to be just a lot of updating and changing because of population, spending, and all that stuff that goes into it, because again, it's for future planning, so. But that is something that will be discussed more at the next couple of meetings.
Okay.
Because we do know that it's on the agenda, that's something that needs to be, you know, taken care of for the health of the town, and to have that in there, so I'm sure that'll take some more time.
Yep.
But other than that, going good, and I think we're going to have a new land use clerk?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, Wednesday.
Wednesday, so that's going to help out the planning board tremendously, because that's a valuable thing, and I'm happy that turnaround was as quick as possible, but, you know, thanks for, you know, nice resident in town that stepped up, so we appreciate that.
It's gonna work out great.
What is it gonna happen on Wednesday?
What?
We have a new land use clerk starting.
Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't catch that?
Yep. Nothing on Marston except for the fact that there was a loose cow out there yesterday, which Courtney and team were able to round up and help remove. Rumor has it he wants to play catcher, but we're not sure he's going to be good enough for that.
Team mascot?
Yeah, exactly, Nottingham cows. 300th Committee held on last Friday, a Veterans Day ceremony. Steve and team put that together. It was a really, really good event. I thought, I thought the team did a really great job, really good turnout on it. Tyler and Steve White get up and spoke about their experiences. So, yeah, overall, it was really good, and I hope, Steve, that we'll be able to continue that every year.
Thank you. Just continuing the 300th, please, everyone, mark your calendars, November 17, 9:00 p.m. on New Hampshire Public Television, they're showing the program Our Home Town, which is featuring, the only show they're gonna show is Nottingham.
Yep.
It's put together by a fellow by name Skylar Spritner for Los Angeles and Becky Wu. So this, we're gonna shine, many of the people in this room will introduce for that. It's nine o'clock, Thursday on New Hampshire Public Television.
Great, awesome, good reminder, thank you, Steve. All right, town administrator report.
Can I just make a comment on the CIP real quick?
Yeah.
Apparently, there appears to be some confusion in regards to the, who's the rep is, and I hope maybe we can get some, we can clear some of that up tonight. You know, on the selectmen's page, it shows that Tyler Eaton is the representative, but then if you go to the CIP page, it shows that I'm the representative. So it seems to be, you know, a little bit of confusion, so I would be more than happy to take it and move it forward, because it's not too late to still have some meetings. That being said, I just hope that going forward, that, you know, when changes are being made, that we're more up to, you know, ensuring that the website, the webpages are up to date.
Yeah, I think that's true. I went back and I looked at what happened, and it was the first meeting of the year, which was John and Tony and I, you and Tyler, weren't here, and we kind of talked initially about what committee assignments might be, and we talked about potentially Tyler doing CIP, but then at the following meeting that you and Tyler were at, we kind of went over that again, and you stepped up for CIP at that meeting. So I think that's probably somewhere along the-
Okay, so going forward, I'm the rep?
You're the rep.
Okay. I'll let the other members know that are on the CIP, and then we can start scheduling meetings, because like I said, it's not too late.
So it's, it's, I know Gene, you want to be a part of it, right?
Yes, I've been appointed, and it's not that I rescind it.
Yep. The, the planning, you know, actually, interestingly enough, it is supposed to be something that's driven by the planning board, per the RSAs. So, and I'll be perfectly honest, I think we've gotten, the last few years, it's gotten to be more lax, because I think other than Gene, we probably never had anybody that wanted to do it, and so Chris has kind of always put it together for us, and it's always been a document that's put together, but really wasn't utilized as a planning tool. Now, where we are today, particularly with the tax cap, it has to become a more important planning tool. Not, not to tell people that they can't do something, but to try and help space out those expenditures, or at least kind of plug them in. So I do think it's a more important tool now, and so there is a planning board rep. I talked to the school board chair today, and they're going to be working on theirs this Wednesday night, so they should have theirs near final after that, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Could I speak to that during the public session?
Only, come on up, and you can do it now. Three minutes, Gene.
Everybody else gets more. I don't know why I get less. Because I tend to ramble. Previously, Tony did it last year with Chris Sterndale's assistance, and it's been, it's been pretty well organized, and my understanding is the board presents to the selectmen, and then the selectmen determine what they want to do with it. I don't remember ever going back to the planning board, and you referenced that it goes to the planning board.
No, I, no, you're correct in the way that it's been done, however, John Decker went back and looked, actually went and looked at the RSAs to see who has authority for it, and it's actually the planning board.
So what would be-
And I'll share that with you, but I'm not suggesting that we do something different this year, I'm just kind of highlighting that as-
I think that should be spelled out to the, to whoever's the chair of that committee, what the procedure is.
I'm not suggesting a change for this year, I'm just highlighting that that is something that John found and shared with me.
Have you got an RSA reference for that?
Yeah, I'll actually forward you, Gene, the email that I got from John, okay?
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, and do you know offhand if the previously requests have been sent out to each of the department heads?
All of that has been submitted.
By who?
The department heads.
Oh, so-
All the department heads have submitted their worksheets already.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah, that's all in place.
Okay.
And you should have those.
I will look, I know I have the summary, but I don't know-
Yeah, they did all submit their worksheets.
So the worksheets were an individual project or request for capital improvement-
Yep.
Along with a priority and the reasoning for that?
I would assume that that's what's on the worksheets, and my understanding is we have all of the worksheets.
Okay, where would I access those?
Well, we're gonna have to see where John has them. Again, Gene, in this transition between Chris and John, we just, he should have them somewhere.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, all good? Okay. John?
Okay. The, number one is on Opera, and we'll be doing that a little bit later. The tax collector has a list of properties that are delinquent. I believe we need to discuss in non-public about not taking them for various reasons. The next item is a court case regarding the cleanup of the Fannie Mae property. Does the board agree with our attorney's calculation of attorney fees that we're getting from FEMA? In other words, they calculated 6,000 and something.
Uh huh. Yep.
Which was our attorney doing her fees, so I assume that that's the right number, and we need to agree that we're waiving the fines, because it was good, you know, you know, it's hard to prove bad faith on the part of Fannie Mae.
Yep.
So we've got the property cleaned up, and this is just to recover the fees we had to get it that way. Is there a motion to approve the fee, the fee submittal to the court?
When we do that, I mean, I'm for it.
We just need a motion.
Well, how do you want to place that motion? That's the question.
Move to take the attorney's recommendation for the fee submittal on the Fannie Mae suit.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the attorney's fees granted from the state for the Fannie Mae property in Nottingham.
The attorney's recommendation.
Attorney's recommendations.
I think you're gonna have to do that again for, Lorraine?
I have made a motion to take the attorney's fees granted from the state with the Fannie Mae suit.
Good enough.
No, actually, it's not.
No, actually, yeah, let me, let me try to word it. To file the party settlement agreement recommended by the attorney in the amount of $6,341.25 to the court regarding the Fannie Mae property suit. Is that-
Do you want to forward that to me? Do you want to forward that to me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So hear the emotion? I mean, I'm not gonna repeat the whole thing back, because I don't even remember that.
Essentially, all we do is reimburse the attorney fees, right?
We reimburse the attorney's fees for $6,341.25.
Are we good with that?
If that's a motion.
If you want to word it otherwise, then-
I need a second.
John, does that sound good enough?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, what else, John?
Okay, I've got to get that to her. The tax cap, the calculation which Chris had suggested back in July, I think, needs to be revisited to be a little more accurate, and there are two basic questions that I think need to be determined. I had heard that there was some discussion that it would only be on the operating budget and not include the warrant articles. I do not know if there was ever a motion on that, or if that's the plan. I thought the way it was worded, it would include everything, but I did do one iteration of how to calculate the tax cap based only on the operating budget.
It is only on the operating budget.
That's the person who wrote the warrant article, that was my understanding, that's the way, it's specified in state law, so it was a question from the state, I think.
So-
The wording was required by the RSA.
So if it's on the operating budget alone, then my proposal's on page three of my report. I'll show you what it looks like. Where you wrote the article, I'm just trying to get it down so it's fairly clear and easy to calculate what it, what it is and how it's to be figured. So, if I may go down through-
John, before you do this, is this actual, or is this just a hypothetical example?
The example is how it would have been done if it was being done for this year's budget process, for 2022's budget, using 2021 as a base year.
So that's all I want to point out, is this is not the actual number that you're concluding for the tax cap this year.
This is just a process.
An example of how you would come up with that number.
So the example of how it would come up, and where you would get the numbers from, the approved operating budget without warrant articles, the, then the, you subtract the MS 434, which is your revenues, your operating transfers, and that gives you your base amount. You multiply that by 104 percent, your 4 percent increase, and that's how you come up with what it will be. The next line comes from the 737 that the budget committee is preparing, which is the operating budget. Then the revenue, which is going in the 737 that the budget committee is preparing, and the difference is the net amount to be raised for taxes for the operating budget portion of the tax, and then you compare those two numbers, they're in gold in the sheet that I printed, and you get what the tax would be. In the case of this example, 2022 exceeded the tax cap by almost $300,000 over what would have been authorized based on the cap applying to 20, to that process. So you use numbers from 2021, the base year, which is in, and then compare it to the budgeting year, which in this example is 2022. So going forward, you would take the, the approved warrant article for the operating budget that was approved this March, you would take the 434 revenue sheet, and the difference would be the amount that's being raised for taxes for the operating budget. You'd multiply that by 1.04 to get the cap number, and then as you're going through the preparation, you would have the budget that you're preparing, you're going to show as the proposed warrant article for the operating budget, and you would then subtract what your projected revenue is, you project revenues on the 737, and those numbers would then be compared. It's the proposed budget minus the proposed revenue going forward, and looking at your base year, at this year, it would be what the 232 shows was the approved warrant article for the budget, minus what we are submitting for the 434, which is your revenue sheet. Does that make sense to you?
Actually?
Do you have a better idea? I'm trying to come up with a fairly straightforward-
And did it ever occur to you to subtract the projected revenue from it?
Well, that, to me, I mean- Well, that, to me, I mean, in simple, simple, it's like you've got what your, what your operating budget is projected to be.
Right.
Right? And then you look at what your projected revenues are going to be, and that offsets that, and your 4 percent has to fall within that balance of expenses and projected revenue.
The increase between the net, it's the net increase.
Right?
Because the tax rate.
If I hadn't thought to consider the revenue, I would have just fucking taken the, the number that it pays on the warrant article to approve the town's budget, I just assumed you'd go with that part.
But that's not a tax rate.
That's not tax.
That's why the tax rate is subtracting the revenue from the.
Expenditures.
Yep.
The expenditures. Now, there's a step I'm not including because I'm assuming that there's no major change in assessment. I'm assuming there's no major change in overlay, no change in veterans' credits or in elderly exemption, solar exemption, holding all of those constant.
Yep.
The simple, the two big numbers that change are revenue and expenditure. So the, the source documents, I would think, would be the warrant that was approved, the revenue that is approved when the, when the tax rate is set. Then the Budget Committee comes up with a projected revenue and, and a recommended budget, and that is, the net there is compared to the net in the other, other group.
So one thing I'll say about that is that the Select Board has always come up with the projected revenues and presented it to the Budget Committee.
Okay, yeah.
And it's gonna be a number that we're going to look at a little more closely this year because we've always, always been very conservative in the revenues. So we're probably this year gonna try to at least do a little bit of a better look at historical and then, you know, what we know for like, from the town clerk and that kind of stuff. So, that, so that's how it's happened, is we come up with it. Basically, in the past, we've always presented it to the Budget Committee. They've, they've said, oh, yeah, fine, and, you know, we've moved on, but.
In basic, for the general public, the big numbers that go into the revenue that we're talking about, motor vehicle fees will be 1.3 million, for example. The state highway funds and the state shared revenue will be another 400,000, 500,000. And that's the bulk of the revenue. Then you play around with much smaller numbers according to. When I say play around with, you look at trends. Interest will start going up, you know, depending upon what happens with uncollected taxes. So it might change 10,000 or 15,000 here, or 10,000 or 15,000 there, but those are your big four numbers.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions on that?
I plan to be at the Budget Committee if you want to discuss it. No, that's yours. You've got other stuff in there too, if you want. Okay, on to the next item. We have a problem on Saks Road in that a homeowner paved their driveway and then paved part of the road, creating a problem where water will run down the hill and wash out the road. We need to address it. I think it's too late to do much about it this winter because the paving plants are, I mean, it's turned too cold really to, to be able to project paving at this point. You might be able to get a day in where it's 45 and rising, or whatever temperature it needs to be. But I do think we need to put the owner on notice that the situation's gonna have to be corrected. And that means either, under the supervision of our Public Works Director, paving down to the foot of the hill, so the water won't run and then wash out the hill. The water will all go down to this level area at the bottom of the hill, which is, I don't know, 75, 100 feet. Or he has to take out all of the pavement he put in the road, and he has to redo the end of his driveway because it's gonna run on the road. He's, he's, this is a general permit issue we're gonna have to address at some point on driveway permits. They are required to have a negative slope as they approach the road, so they don't wash onto the road. When roads get paved, it frequently paves right over that. The paver is much easier to start right at the edge and just go right straight up. And then the water will run down the pavement and run out onto the road. And in the cold weather, it freezes and creates ice dams and other problems. In the mud season, it washes out the gravel roads. I mean, there's a lot of problems with these roads being, the driveways being paved. So this one here, there's actually two issues, but I, I want to be able to put the person on notice that the current situation is unacceptable and will have to be corrected in the spring, working in conjunction with Sean, the Public Works Director. So can I send such a letter?
Yep.
Is, do you want us to work on the driveway permit to make clear that if we, we give them the permit, the driveway goes in, they have to meet the standard? The problem comes is later.
Two separate issues.
Two separate issues.
Two separate issues. The first is sending notice to the homeowner about how we need to rectify the current situation. And are we comfortable saying at this point, the situation needs to be rectified, you know, to an agreement, you know, with the Public Works Director and the owner? Versus us saying at this point, you need to rip it up in the spring, or you need to do this specifically to fix it in the spring? You know what I'm asking? Do we want to be prescriptive at this point about what action needs to be taken? Or do we want to leave it open, just saying some action is going to have to be taken in the spring, and you will have to work with the Public Works Director to come up with what that action is? Not the right words, but to understand where I'm going, right?
I, I, you know, here we go, someone that just, you know, I'm sure they meant well, but it's a town-accepted road, I'm still trying to wrap my head around why would somebody wanna just pave a portion of the road that doesn't belong to them?
Well, it leads into their driveway.
So is the road higher than the driveway, or is the driveway higher?
So if you come off Mountain Road, it's, Mountain Road's paved. They just started on Mountain Road, paved right down the driveway, so their car never hits dirt. So they came off the main road, went down the hill, turned, and went up their driveway.
There's what, like 200 feet, Sean, or something like that?
Oh, no, no.
No, it's not that far.
Like 25 feet, maybe?
25, okay.
Yeah, in other words, Mountain Road, their driveway came out very close to Mountain Road, so they paved down the driveway, they went up to the state road, and then they went down the hill, pathway, ending right in the middle of the hill, which is going to wash out the, create a, wash out the gravel just below it and create a hill very difficult for everyone down in there to get out.
So all the water coming out their driveway. Everything's coming both ways.
But if we remove that, we're still gonna have that issue with gravel eroding, right?
All right, not as bad. See, what's gonna happen is water's gonna run down the pavement. At the end of the pavement, it's going to undermine on the gravel right there, rather than, you know, the, the way it's going to hit is going to be the issue. In other words, coming down pathway is, the entire hill being gravel would be a better situation than halfway down pavement.
Yeah, yeah. I would, we, work it out, I guess is what you're saying.
Well, and Sean, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this, but it is like, the, the tone and the message of the letter that gets sent now is important, right? Because nothing can happen to the spring, so we need to set the right expectations for the spring.
The tone was two options. Option A, pave all the way down more, or option B, take it up and fix the end of your driveway so it prevents rush off, runoff from going into the road. Those are the two options.
Okay, so can we highlight those as the two options in the letter? Two things that will need to be considered, blah, blah, blah?
Right.
You know, we will need to meet with the Public Works Director in the spring to determine the best option. Better language, but, does that work for you, Sean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to do one of those two options.
One of those two options.
I was gonna mean that they might come up with a third one, but I can't imagine what the third one would be, so.
What are the two again, John?
Take it up and fix the end of the driveway to prevent runoff from off the driveway down to the road? Or continue paving down the road?
And I want to make clear that this is at the expense of the property owner.
Yes.
It's not at the town.
For sure.
At the expense of the property with the town's oversight. I don't want them doing it.
Yes.
Some night without us being there, and the pavement isn't to temperature, and they don't compact it, and they only put an inch down or something, you know.
John, can you circulate that and share that with the board, please?
Yes.
The draft?
Yeah.
Okay, the second part of the issue, the second issue which John started to go into is, unlike many times, many towns, we don't have a process for applying for a permit to pave a driveway. And so part of John's question is, do we want to move forward with that? So that we avoid situations like this in the future?
Well, common sense, why would you want to pave going out in the street that's not yours?
Well, no, the, the issue with the driveway permit is most frequently, the driveway came down.
No, I know what you're saying.
And they had the negative.
Yeah.
They put the paver on, and they come right straight to the street, so it has no negative pitch. They don't pitch it sideways to avoid running it on the road, or they don't, you know, they, I think we need some kind of control, so when they pave their driveway, they are not creating a hazard onto the road. So that's what I would like to, you know, consider an amendment to the driveway ordinance, but before we wrote that up, I wanted to discuss it with the board. A lot of people are coming in afterwards, and they, sometimes they need, you know, these driveways that went in on private roads before they needed driveway permits, the issue. They don't have a covelet, and they don't, you know, they then, I just want to have the town to have the authority to require someone to fix their driveway where it goes into the road if they're gonna do work on it, like paving it.
Why don't I suggest, since this is the first time we're discussing it, why don't we just put that on the agenda to discuss at the next meeting? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
Give it some thought and.
Well, at, at this point, you've got most of the wind, and nobody's gonna be paving driveways now until.
So let's just move.
Yeah, I never even thought about that, I mean, ever, never came up to me.
Yeah, but, you know, I looked, and there are a number of towns that actually have a requirement for a permit to do that. And given how many roads we inherited, it might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, even this one out there didn't have a driveway permit because it wasn't, when they put the gravel driveway in, Sean went out and worked with them to fix the drainage. But then, when they paved it, they undid all the fix. Now, the contractor was the one he did the fix with, and the owner is the one probably oversaw the next project without understanding what was there and why, so.
Okay.
Okay, next item. Captain Smith Road, turns out it is a revolution, we believe, Revolutionary War veteran who's buried on the property with a big granite boulder that marks it, and that's why they wanted to name it Captain Smith. I think that came before the planning board.
Yep.
So is it, does, does the Board of Selectmen approve the name Captain Smith Road?
I, I think it's fine, given the history and the existence of the markers and those kinds of things out there.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Consensus is it's okay for Captain Smith. Tell Chris Berry.
How does that affect now, 11 E?
This is a new road, it doesn't have any name yet. It's being built as part of a subdivision. Sorry, I should have made that clear. This is a subdivision that's going in, and it's, it's not changing it from a current name to a new name. And we don't believe we have any, we, we checked the list, and we have nothing that sounds like Captain Smith. Our next item, calendar. Does the board wish to set the deliberative session for Saturday, February 4th, with the snow date of Saturday, February 11th? The school indicates they'll be using a weeknight.
My only personal problem with that is that I will be here on the 4th, but I will not be here on the 11th.
You could set the.
What are we gonna do without you, Donna?
I, it's possible to set the snow date on a weeknight.
I would be good with that, I, I would love to be here, I just can't change what's happening on the 11th.
What month?
February.
February.
Those are the two ends. It's gotta be 4th, 11th, or in between.
I, I would not prefer a weeknight, not prefer a weekend.
Done.
I'd prefer the weeknight, but whatever. I'll make whatever days available, I'll be there.
I prefer the weeknight, too.
So, so there's agreement on February 4th?
For sure, yep.
Yeah, we can do February 4th.
And we can work on the snow date later?
Yes.
Get input.
Maybe get the other two and have, all five have input with us. Calendar issue, Christmas Eve falls on a Saturday. Would it be acceptable to close the recycling facility at 1:00 and pay the staff for the rest of the afternoon?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, we'll make sure there's signs indicating that.
So it's second closing at 12:45, just in case you're curious. Sorry.
Okay, the next two items, I think we've already talked about. The pressure washer, Sean got, looked at the one at Chapel Tractor that Ben mentioned. The concern there is the pressure is comparable, but it doesn't put the volume out that he needs for that spray rig that he uses under the trucks.
What is this thing, like a fire hose or something? What is this?
Hey, John, I'm sorry, can we delay that until we have the budget conversation?
Sure.
Okay, just because we're way behind, we've got the Conservation Commission here, we've got the.
Do you want to put all the rest of the FYIs off?
Anything that's related to the budget, let's put it off until we start to talk about the budget tonight, okay? I think we're gonna have to jump around.
Okay. The school has finally submitted the last form that was needed, so we're waiting on DRA for a tax rate. I put an email to there. Steve's already mentioned the special septicage, we need an agreement in place. The court case on Water Cross, they have until December 2nd if they want to go to Supreme Court, but we've wanted every level up until, till now. And there is a New Hampshire Division of Parks Zoom meeting Thursday at 6:30 on the 17th, talking about future expansion plans at three parks, one of which is Pawtucket Way, for anyone who wants to join. And I've got the link in here, and we're publicizing the link. And I included a couple of copies of the preliminary plans in the, in the packet. My understanding is the boat launch is no longer part of that plan, although I believe it shows on the plan.
That's what I heard, too.
That's what we heard. Okay, that will be it for my report.
The only one I, that I don't think we've discussed is the sewer, the septicage, I'm sorry.
The, the, the New Hampshire requires us to have an agreement with a plant that has capacity to take the septicage from the town. And Exeter and Epping no longer have that capacity and can't do it. Allenstown can, and one of the septicage haulers I talked to is already paying to go to Allenstown. This would just tell the state that we are piggybacking on with Allenstown is where the septicage haulers can go. If they can find somewhere else, they can go somewhere else. But we have to provide capacity for what the town generates for septicage by entering an agreement.
So, I'm naive on this, but like, so when you talk about the town's septicage, is it like the septic?
When they pump the septic tank at your house.
But we have private companies that take care of that.
Correct, but we have to provide a place for them to go to.
Oh, did not know that.
By law. That's what this 485A, 5B says. Now, they have to pay when they go there.
So even though they were a private entity, the town has to provide a place for them to go to? Or identify a place for them to go to?
Has to identify a place.
It prevents them from spreading it in open fields and stuff.
Never knew that, learn something new every day. Okay.
Yeah. The town did enter one in 2006, but hasn't entered one since then.
Okay.
So this is a yearly thing?
Yeah, well, if you enter into it, I don't know, it'll be up to Allenstown whether they want it annually, but until, you ought to revisit it periodically, because the one the town has is with Summersworth, and I think that one, they had to stop taking after the floods that occurred, oh, 10 years or so ago. So it's been a while since people could go there.
Okay, so the action coming out of that is, what do we, what do we?
I'll bring you an agreement form when they finalize it.
Okay.
But I just wanted to let you know it was coming, that's why it's FYI.
Learn something new every year.
Yeah.
And all that board for nine years. And all that board for nine years, I've never heard that before. Okay.
John comes in and we're learning all these new stuff.
You know, I'm really happy to learn about septicage, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Now I know what happens.
I can tell you something even scarier.
Nope, nope, moving on.
About septicage?
Moving on. I think I'm going to recommend, if you guys are okay, that we skip action items assessing general business and budget review for now and we move ahead with the appointments that are here. Okay. Let's do, 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 so the, we've got input for uncommitted ARPA funds and then Highland monitoring. Do, does, does the Conservation Commission have any preference? Do you guys want to go now, or, okay? Come on down. Let, let's get Sam out of here as soon as we can. Highland.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sam Demare. I chair the Conservation Commission. To my right is Susan Mooney, who is the secretary. I'm getting my picture taken again.
Smile pretty.
You're not playing Mexican train tonight.
No, no, no Mexican train tonight. I also have two other members. The vice chair is back there and Mary Kolbar is also there. We came to see you people about the, I think we've sent the letter to you people that, about the housing, Highlands Housing Development deed restriction easement annual monitoring.
Yep, yep, yep.
The last few years has generally been just Susan and myself that have been doing it, and we're getting along in the tooth, to say. I'm already an octogenarian, so. And it takes, takes us usually two hours to do, you know, the two of us half of the development and another two hours to do the other half.
It's more like three, Sam. Not ten.
Three, okay. Well, even two is, getting it to me, the last time we did it, we did, we did, we did two hours on a Saturday morning and did two hours on Sunday afternoon, you know, the next day. And I, we were both pooped at the end of that. So we, you know, so we're asking to see if the development can reestablish their homeowners' association, which was supposed to, originally supposed to take care of things like that.
Did they have one?
They did have one, in name anyway. I haven't, haven't heard from anybody since that time.
The, um, the housing development was set up in around 2004, and in 2010, I'm not sure what agency told us this, it could have been the Select Board at the time, that monitoring had not been taking place, and this was a program that was set up by Mr. Belzoni and-
Planning Board?
And Planning Board, to, to ensure, to protect the watershed for the Little River. So at that time, we assumed annual monitoring in November, usually with letters that went out to the 19 residents who contained property that was restricted, and then we would follow up with two days or two teams and monitor for compliance. And as Sam said, we're getting weary and would like to pass on the responsibility. Certainly, there are some people that have approached us and have been concerned with activities that their neighbors have done, and we've reported these violations over the years. But if someone would step up, or some people would step up and form an HOA, they can monitor themselves, which would be much more desirable. And as Sam said, we're getting pooped.
And so they have not been interested or willing, have you approached them about?
No, we have not. And we've kind of put the ball back in, in your court to maybe send a letter out to all of these 19 residents, or maybe the whole development, to form an HOA for such a purpose as monitoring the properties with deed restrictions.
I don't think we have any authority to do that. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you may have better done about these instances.
Well, I've sat on the planning board for quite a few years.
Yes.
You know, so I've worked with Sue for quite a few years. I've always had the problem, even though the philosophy of these new subdivisions with the smaller lots and the more conservative land, is the situation that we're arising now, and then when people do violate these, who always steps in to take care of it? Who becomes the bad guy? How do we enforce the conservation? How do we force it? Are we legally allowed to send the fine out? Or is there a definition of what the fine would be for what actions that are taking place? There's a lot of variables that aren't as clear. So that was always my concern with it, even though I liked the idea of the smaller lots and, you know, protecting the land and having like this. My always issue was, you know, who becomes the bad guy?
Right.
You know?
I could just point out something. Highlands is not an open space subdivision. All the lots are either two acres or larger.
Perfect, good.
This was set up before then, and these are not conservation easements, these are deed restrictions. And I provided copies of the deed restrictions that are on file down at Rockingham County Registry of Deeds.
So is this a court issue with somebody that violates their deed restriction?
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I would defer to Mr. Scruton on what he would determine would be the best action on this. All I know is from 2010 to now, the Conservation Commission has been monitoring.
Mm-hmm.
We've been reporting violations. We've been told at some times that we should see if we couldn't get this problem taken care of ourselves. At the, at the times, there was, like, to, we had minimum support from the Select Board to make sure that these problems were addressed.
Well, I guess I'm looking for, for you to tell us, you know, because I've never addressed this problem, even though I've been here.
I don't know, John.
Well, I don't know either. So I mean, we're going to have to, I mean, I hate using the town attorney, but that's-
We, we have no enforcement powers on our, on our own. All we can do is report the violations.
But who does, to your question? Your question still stands, who does?
Gale through land use. It can be done, but it's, it's best to try to get cooperation, but as you say here, there's somebody that continues to violate and has ignored your direction. That's the kind that you may want to make an example of, but it's, it, you're going to have to spend some money on that and take them to court.
So, let me understand, that i- in this particular case, is the situation one person who removed a tree? And that's what, is it just that one situation?
Well, it was more than just removing a tree, and it happened prior to the Conservation Commission assuming the monitoring. But every year, we go in and there are, there's trimmings done on the shrubbery, the lawn is like this high, and it should be just shrubs right up to the critical wetland, and we've sent letters to the fellow, to the resident, and nothing gets done.
Okay, so you're not, you're not going to like what I'm going to throw out here?
Okay.
But I'm throwing this out for food, for thought. If it's, if it's that one individual and that one situation, how much money do we want to spend on a lawyer? Just a question.
Yep.
Not saying, not saying we shouldn't, and I, I understand that, you know, one situation could lead to four, but we are also going to talk later about a budget where we have to meet-
Double edged sword.
Four percent budget cap, tax cap. So.
You know, this is an habitual offender. I mean, as John had mentioned at some point, kind of make an example, but then, you know, maybe then that'll prevent other violators and all that stuff, but then at what cost?
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree with you, I'm just trying to throw out all sides.
I mean, we spent $6,000 on the junkyard that Fannie Mae had acquired. Now, that one was an eyesore, it was public, it was, you know, I think probably the general consensus was it was worth spending that money, especially now we're going to get it back. How much are we going to spend on this and are we going to have a chance to get it back? Fannie Mae has deep pockets, so we're pretty sure we're getting it back, whereas-
We're not going to get anything back on this.
Well, it's going to be, I, I, I would not want to bet that we get anything back.
What would we get back? I don't understand that.
Well, fines and, fines and fees.
But we don't have a schedule of defined fines.
Or violation of the, yeah.
But we can't fine somebody if we don't know what, if they, if we haven't, if we don't have a schedule of fines, right? Can we say to somebody all of a sudden, oh, you didn't do the right thing, we're going to fine you $250?
State has something?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not so sure we don't have something in that this was part of a planning board approval, they're in violation of their approval, that you might be able to go after them on a per diem basis of him being in violation. I'm not saying you're going to win on that, but that's what I would start off with, the $250 a day, $250 a day fine, and start with that and try to see if we can get compliance. But I wouldn't hold out that we're going to get any money whatsoever back, and that we're going to, I can almost guarantee we're going to spend $5,000 just to get started.
Okay, I mean, that's, all due respect to you guys, total all due respect, but like, do we want to spend $5,000 in legal fees to do this?
Not with the way the economy is headed.
I'm just going to make a point of, I remember when this went in, and I said, this is a bad idea, having, you know, all of these house lots up against this, I thought it was a preserved area, but I think it was a deed requirement. So I just think in the future, these kind of setups are not a good idea, because of the conservation position.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and here it is a mess, and so I agree, it's, it's, it's a problem, but-
And we can't correct it because it's all deeded now, right?
This is the only one that was ever done this way.
Oh, okay.
What area were you talking about? What area?
Highland Housing Development.
This is like revolutionary in Washington.
John, what are your thoughts? What are you thinking?
As much as I wouldn't want to spend the money, I use the fact of spending the money for the fact that at least now we show that the town does stand with the conservation and what they're trying to do to hopefully make this a, something that shows that if somebody does future violate, if they ignore the town and ignore what the conservation says, there was some sort of example put out. I can see it snowballing. So, I mean, that, you know, I, I'm, again, I'm playing the double edged-
Oh, I know, I know.
You know, here's one way to look at it, you know, because-
Yep.
So I mean, again, it's, it's, if money was no object, go right ahead.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, but again, is there a number that we can say, you know, what level do we go to? I mean, is there a number that says, you know, are we going to get away with spending $2,500? Are we sure is it going to go to five or six? I don't- If the individual has done it for this long, chances are we're going to be spending a lot of money fighting this. But we're going to cost the individual money, too.
May I say something, please, to the board?
Yeah.
Sam and I are here because we have assumed this responsibility of monitoring as a service to the town. We are not an agency to enforce. We're tired, Sam and I, we would like somebody else to monitor. That's the first point we're making tonight. The second point is, if you wish to follow up on this, this violation that's been outstanding for 10 years, that's your prerogative.
I think that's really more discussion later on, you know?
And to make an issue of it would at least catch everybody's attention. And it doesn't have to cost a lot of money, it could just be, oh my God, you know, the town is serious about conservation. It's not the Conservation Commission, we're just agencies to assist the town.
It, it, the meeting's being recorded, don't worry.
Am I allowed to talk to Tom behind me? Or shall I direct it to you?
Direct it to me.
Okay. Would you please, please tell Mr. Beckwith, who we, we would be delighted if he would help form an HOA?
Okay, you guys can take-
I don't want to.
You guys can-
I'll talk to you guys later.
Talk, you guys, you two can talk offline, outside of this meeting.
Okay.
All right. With regards to monitoring. I get being tied in how much service you've offered to the community, but there are other members of the Conservation Commission as well that are younger.
Yes, and they, they monitor other easements that the town holds deeds for. So we have four of five, and everybody seems to take the lead on monitoring these at convenient times.
Okay, good. So I, I think the question for the board is, you know, do we want a role in going after this individual? Do we want to spend legal fees on it? What do we think we need to make a decision on that?
It's a no-win situation, no matter what you say.
It is, it totally is no-win, yeah.
You know? Now here, don't take this in the wrong way.
No, no, John.
Could we use conservation funds to defend the, the property?
Not appropriate, regarding conservation.
Say that, what did you just say?
The land is already in conservation, so on, conservation fund is to procure properties for conservation easements and improvements thereof.
Well, wouldn't this be an improvement?
Would this be, this would be improvement thereof, wouldn't it?
I'm not sure.
I want to look into that because you-
Yeah.
Legal, legal would should be able to direct you.
John, can you find out if we can use conservation funds to pursue some kind of course of action in this one particular case?
And these conservation funds, I know some of them are current use, right? Land use, change tax?
No, 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 not current use.
It's a, it's a separate fund.
So what fund is this that we're talking?
This is called the Conservation Fund.
Right, but what is the, is there a designated purpose for that fund that's cited?
It's a fund that we have set up.
Under 36A, or is the town-
36A.
But did the town give specific parameters to it when it set it up?
Well, it's both by the parameters that the state set up.
Okay, so you're just going by what, it's in 36A?
Yes.
Okay.
But, and to that, and John, the Conservation Commission has legal authority to, to direct funds toward a certain project.
Correct.
So this is the agency that says, yes, you may use the money. The Select Board is the agency that said, we approve the withdrawal of the funds for that purpose.
Yes.
So it's a two-pronged, two-step process.
Yeah, I was just, some, some funds are set up with specific parameters, but if it's according to what's in 36A, then I will run that by an attorney.
All right, thank you.
All right, cool, thank you, John.
Yep.
All right, guys.
So-
Thank you for listening.
Yep. Oh, did you have a question?
Well, just to clarify, if we can use conservation money, and the attorney says, are we going to have another meeting about this, or are we just going to give the approval that says, go for it?
I'm okay if we can use conservation funds going forward with it.
You're good?
Yep.
I'm good. So if the lawyer says we can use it to go after it, then we'll take the next step of lawyering up against-
Assuming conservation also agrees.
Correct.
I'm sh- okay, yeah, as soon as they agree, also.
Yeah, no, I, I know the people on-
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good, all right, guys, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I'm going to drop off a newsletter from the, from SOUTT.
SOUTT is land rush.
The feature article is about the caper property. The feature article is about the, um, capron property and who bought it, and they're putting it into agriculture.
Which property?
The capron, Roger Stees, it's wonderful.
Oh, nice.
Mister, our, our hero here has his picture in it too.
Aw, nice.
And at some point, I'll do it to you.
Oh, cool, thank you for bringing that.
You want it back? I want it to stay in there.
But not tonight.
Oh, okay.
Oh, all right.
See the mailbox?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
You want the input?
Input of ARPA funds?
Selfies Land Trust. Selfies Land Trust.
All right, let's go back to, um, input for uncommitted ARPA funds.
If I may?
What?
Oh, do you want me to give an introduction?
Yeah, yeah.
Eligible expenditures, um, there was some discussion as to what is eligible. The original, uh, proposal as put out, the draft as put out in 2021 was fairly restrictive, but in January of 2022, the final issuance of the rules opened it up, so it can be used for road and infrastructure, construction, maintenance, general government administration, staff, administrative facilities, including payroll, environmental remediation, wastewater, COVID, construction, reconstruction, police, fire, public safety, services including purchase of fire trucks, police vehicles, upgrades, modernization of cybersecurity, and that list is non-exhaustive. Basically, governmental services are allowed. It cannot be used, uh, cannot be used for capital projects funded with borrowed money. It cannot be used to pay down debt. It cannot be deposited into pension funds. It cannot be used to offset tax revenue. Um, it cannot be used to undermine COVID-19 mitigation practices. Uh, it cannot be used for settlements and judgments. Uh, so, basically, most governmental purposes that the town is involved, it can be used for. Um, there are a number of projects that are being, uh, considered as presented by department heads, and if I may read that list, uh, the highway department, uh, basically another $6,704 towards the Maston project that was not included in the original $60,000 appropriation, $170,000 for COVID engineering and three particular COVID projects, $40,000 for that Birch Lane COVID that we just did, $10,300 for the replacement of the compactor receiver box, the repair cost is more than buying a new one, um, and it needs to be replaced because of rust and everything else. This is the, uh, where all the trash is compacted in. Uh, roof, $10,000 for a roof for tire storage, $100,000 for the backhoe to replace the current vehicle, which isn't currently working, we're renting a backhoe right now. Um, fire departments requested bay door safety syst, I don't have dollar numbers with any of the fire department ones, but the office and meeting room floor, the bay, uh, the, the bay at the station, epoxy ceiling, a leak repair in the roof, uh, meeting room door rain protection, gutter cleaning, door frame corrosion repair, uh, portable radio replacement, base radio replacement, and fire station cascade system replacement. I, his orig, his list did include an emergency generator for Nottingham School. The board asked me to ask if the schools received their own part of money, and they did. Um, some overlap and some don't. Uh, but those are some of the possible uses that, uh, that ARPA money could be used for. Uh, right now, the amount that, uh, uh, is available is $381,000. Is that fireworks? No?
Rain?
Yep.
Rain. Okay, so that, obviously, that list is bigger than what we have. So, part of, um, putting this on the agenda tonight was to, you know, kind of just talk in general at generality, generalities, about, you know, um, where we think we want to spend it, also to take input from anybody in the public.
What's the remainder balance we have?
$381,000.
And so, the, the list that he has numbers for adds up to about $330,000. Um, so, this is also the opportunity, if anybody in the public wants to provide input into this, there, now is the time to do that as well. I'm sorry, what's your name again? Are you, are you new to town?
Sandra Weston, 345 St. Joe. The pot that is available, $381,000.
Yes.
What's the wish list?
What he just read off.
What I just read off, but I don't have dollar numbers for fire.
Oh, well, the numbers that he, he gave us numbers for everything except for the police, I'm sorry, for the fire, and that added up to about $330,000.
The, the highway alone is 320.
Yeah.
Three, 330.
Yeah.
So, it's conceivable that most of that could, could be done without money.
What, well, there, there are other possibilities which are, uh, I, I myself would recommend against repair type stuff, um, you know, the rain gutter cleaning, whereas the cascade system, I'd want to know what, when, what the lifespan is on that, when that needs to be replaced, uh, the base radio and the portable radios, those are big items. I would think you would try to address items that are, um, significant, that are, uh, that need to be replaced if you were looking at, say, for example, the fire issues. Uh, there are other needs that we know we're going to have as you go through the budget, there are things you may pull out of the budget and think it might be better to purchase via this. This cannot directly offset a budgetary expenditure, but we have just about everything on that list, could be something that is not in the budget yet as far as being approved next year, so...
Some of it could be on the, um, CIP though, right?
Right, some of these are on the CIP.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yep. Well, they're on the CP, IP that I've seen, but it hasn't come from the CIP committee now, that's clear to me at this point, and...
Yeah, it, it is the roll-up of all the, uh, worksheets.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Um, thoughts, ideas, how do we, I mean, I, I don't think we're going to make decisions tonight, but it's like, what do we need in order to move forward to decide how we want to use this money?
We still have time to spend this money, even though we don't spend it next year, this year.
Yeah, we've got like another year, I think.
Uh, I've got to see what Chris checked in the spring. Uh, Betsy just got me access, and I haven't gone on yet, but we have at least through next year and might have into the following year.
Yeah.
So, it's not, you don't have to decide tonight. In fact, um, you, I, I really think this kind of goes hand in glove with your budgeting process and your CIP process as you decide what your big items are. Um, there may be something else that comes up. I would say that there's, the, um, the $170,000 for COVID engineering, you also have accepted a, a significant amount of highway money, so you might be able, you've also got that in the, uh, to consider as well. Last meeting, you accepted, uh...
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I was going to read the number back, but yeah.
Yeah. I don't remember the number because it was two different sources.
There was two numbers, one is only for bridges.
Yep.
Uh, the 90-something thousand is only for bridges, whereas the, uh, uh, well, it was 275,000 total, of which like 40 was retirement and 90 was bridges and the rest was highway. I don't, I don't have the breakdown right here, but, but like I said, that you've got two significant pots of money.
Yep.
Available for, I would recommend capital, not, uh, maintenance kind of activities.
For ARPA over the highway?
Uh, for, uh, actually, for kind of both of them, really, because you're, you're getting, you're getting your regular highway money still, uh, and this is all in addition to your regular highway money. I think some things, you know, that compactor receiver box, you know, you may as well order one of those. I mean, you, you don't want to try to repair the one you've got, and the life, I don't know if Sean wants to speak to how much life it's got left, but it doesn't have a lot of life left.
275, okay. I just have a couple of questions. I thought a couple of years ago, I'm not sure if it was the year that Sean came on or the year before that, that we had, uh, set aside funds to buy a Conex, a metal box to put tires in. And I think it was the same year that we were, we, uh, uh, ordered a plow for the Bobcat. The plow never came either.
Hmm, I don't remember a box for tires.
We were going to do something. And here we are, $10,000 you want for storage for...
A, a roof over the tires so they don't fill up with water and then freeze and ice and everything else.
I remember having a conversation with this a few years ago about that.
It was, that was prior to my time.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously not anything that we did.
And then, the 6,000, $6,700 for Maston, I thought we were all done with the well.
Well, you only approved 60,000 of ARPA money and it came to 66,000, so we have to find the other 6,000 either out of our operating budget or in additional ARPA authorization. In other words, the total cost on the well was 66,704, and you had approved 60,000 la, earlier this year. So, that's why the 6,000 is there. Now, uh, uh, we're in the process of getting that all certified as a public water supply and everything else, but basically, next spring, when we open up, we hope to be able to have, um, you know, drinking water out there and everything.
Just, just from my own frame of thought and those who are at home, when you're saying set it up for a public water source, the general public just going to have open access to it, or how's that going to work?
Well, I thought you put the well in so people could drink water while they were there at the site.
It's also for an emergency fund where if we were in a severe drought and there was residents in town because of their area that does, you know, was maybe dry because they're near an aquifer, if they needed access to water, they could go get their five gallon water jugs and go get it and fill their...
They have, they have no power, right?
Right, I understand what you're saying, but to get access to it, all right, is this under lock and key, or, or...
I don't think it's been decided.
Can anybody, can I just go up there with a five gallon jug and just fill it up with water?
Well, you can't today.
The fountain itself is outside, mounted to the building on the exterior, and there's an outside spigot.
Okay.
Now, whether that's shut off in the wintertime and, when they winterize it, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
I would assume it's, um, shut off, that's one thing Dale's working on. Make sure everything is winterized up there for water, but spring, the irrigation system too.
Okay, so, I guess part of it is, you know, how do we want to approach this? How do we want to think about it?
Well, it wasn't that long ago, the last couple of meetings, people keep bringing up, we had the facility committee here not long ago, basically stating all these buildings are in dire need of some sort of, uh, repair, and, and, and they're absolutely correct, uh, they, they do. Uh, I don't know if we could continue to put off repairs of this building any longer. Um, well, we got leaky windows and, and, and what have you, I mean, kind of surprised we don't have any leaks in, in here. But, uh, that being said, I, I think, you know, if we don't start maintaining the buildings, then some really expensive projects are going to be coming down the pike that long after these, this money's already spent, or some hard decisions will have to be made in regards to buildings. Um, we were fortunate enough to be able to, to work out the old town hall and the SAU was able to get in there, but what about this building? What about, uh, the police next door, or even the highway department with their buildings and so on?
Tell us your plan.
Yeah, um, I would like to carve out a portion of this money and set it aside for maintenance of, of these buildings, particularly this building, highway department. Um, I think you were, you're better off taking the risk and asking for a black hole on a warrant article and take that money and, and fix up the recycling center, highway garage, and whatever you need down there at the pit. Um, I'd be in favor of the $170,000 for the COVID engineering to get them ready for when other funds come down for, I mean, there was no way around Birch Lane, so, um, compact the receiver box, I think, just do it.
Just do it.
I don't underst, I don't understand how it costs $10,000 for a tire storage, is, how big is the area?
It's the, the area where the tires currently go, it's going to...
It's right next to where the glass used to be, or we...
Correct.
Okay.
The actual price is 9,700.
Okay.
That's for framing, roofing, metal roofing.
Is it enclosed?
It's a, it's a, it's a shed roof, it's going to have an open front, three-sided, and it butts up against the existing building, the one thing that was a challenge in there is the exhaust fan, and how that's going to get rerouted because that's where the tires are, and the roof will be it, exhaust fan.
And that's been called out by DES, right?
Correct, yeah, no, I get it.
Yep.
Uh, one thing to support what you're saying about this building, today the toilets were all stuffed up and we had to get somebody in here on an emergency basis because of the blood drive, um, and we had to use the school SAU office for toilets for a while today, and they said the pipes are broken under the floor, so you're probably going to have to rip up the kitchen floor.
Wait.
And redo the pipes, yes.
Wait, so what bathrooms aren't working here?
All of them were.
No bathroom here, I went...
There, there was a period at, right around...
Are they working now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, they came, they managed to get them going again, but he said it's going to occur again, he doesn't know how quick we'll have to do it again because he's going to come with his cameras and look through it, but he had said some while ago, apparently, that the pipes, the cast iron pipes under the kitchen floor are broken and you're going to have to dig up the kitchen floor and replace that whole pipe out through there to the septic system.
I specifically remember prior to that, because the, uh, project getting the green light, that we discussed the issue of the pipes, and I was under the impression that that would be taken care of prior to anything happening to that kitchen, and now we're learning that it's not the pro, that it wasn't taken care of, we're going to have to dig up what we've already done, irresponsible, waste of money. I cannot believe that we didn't address that issue prior to doing the work in the kitchen.
Uh, I was saying that...
Sitting here wasting taxpayers' money.
So...
Sorry, go ahead.
That was just an FYI.
Yep.
Um, so, you're, you're saying the top four, you'd like to make a motion to approve the, um, the extra money Maston well, the COVID engineering Birch Lane, and the compactor receiver?
No, no, these are just my ideas.
No, 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 no.
Oh.
This is a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I wasn't looking to have, uh...
Okay.
Yeah, no, this is a conversation.
Yep. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I was just...
No worries, John.
Giving you is, uh, this, this is a problem with this building.
Yeah.
It's a problem with all the buildings.
Yeah, and...
Yeah, there's a lot of those kinds of issues.
Absolutely, not doubting it.
We should have working bathrooms. I've, I've said enough on that.
Yeah, I, you know, your point is well-taken, Ben. Um, question becomes, and maybe the facilities committee needs to help us with that, but it's like, what's, what would be the exact plan and how much would it cost? Right?
We don't know yet either, all right? Because he just said they're going to bring a camera and to look at where the pipe is broken. The pipe could be broken outside.
Great, that saves us.
Again, we don't know the answer, it's not, we just don't know the proper answer of where it is, do we get a professional service in here to look at the pipes to see what it is?
Yeah, that's, that's what's happening, you've got it scheduled.
So, that, from there, within we know whether, well, we can look at the problem as being a outside problem fix or, or an inside problem fix, right?
Right, but...
But don't, don't, we, we don't blame...
We're dealing with, uh, asbestos in there too, on the floor.
Yeah, my understanding is the Maston has asbestos. So, but, but it's not...
Sure, the whole back of the building does too, that's why we haven't touched it in...
Right, it's non-friable, so, yeah, but the asbestos in there would be non-friable, so it's relatively easy to deal with as far as asbestos goes compared to other situations. So it's relatively easy to deal with as far as asbestos goes compared to other situations. The other issue we've got that I didn't put on this list because we're planning to take it out of one of the warrant article expenditures is the Highland Avenue culvert, which is 130, 40,000.
Well, that was with engineering, but yeah, it's under 100,000, but that was money set aside off of the warrant, the 300,000 warrant article for road reconstruction.
But we just got a bill for 450, 45,000 for paving, so.
We're in the real house. We should have the funds still remaining. We have a 600,000 total between the warrant article and the 300,000 in my operating budget.
But that's another possibility to do that Highland Avenue culvert out of this. I didn't put it in here, but.
Our culvert should be based on my expenditure, my thought process on expenditure of culverts. This is just my opinion, so it's just open, because we should expend it on the higher traveled roads than on the lesser travel roads.
I don't disagree with you as long as it doesn't become like.
I'm saying the three culverts that are out there that we're repairing, if we have to cut one in order to save some money, cut the one on the least traveled road. And I know that's a bad thing to say, but.
You can do that until it becomes like Birch Lane where it becomes a hazard to pass with anything over two ton, you know, then you have no choice.
River going through Birch Lane. This ain't no river.
Yeah, yeah, that there's a lot, a lot going through there. I tell you, SUI did an exceptional job on that Birch Lane culvert.
Oh, looked beautiful.
It's actually beautiful.
Yeah.
We may even put it in the town report.
So having said that, though, it is a little higher than what was there before.
It had to be.
All right, is there going to be any requirement for guardrails or anything?
We talked and kicked it around, but right at this time with the speed being as low as it is, we don't feel.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we did have that discussion.
We do have a, if you notice, if you've been out there, there is a granite block that's higher than the rest. It's kind of a stop that we thought we were going to put it on.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah, no, we we wondered about that because that would add another 15 to 20,000 to it.
Okay, so with regards to ARPA. To me, kind of like the higher level decision, I think that we need to make is what, how do we want to leverage them? Do we want to try and offset some departmental expenses that we know are coming up that are going to be significant? Again, I keep bringing everything back to this 4% tax cap. Do we want to use it that way to offset some of that? Or as you're proposing, Ben, do you want, do we want to try and say? No, we know from the facilities committee that we've got some big building issues. And we want to, based on their recommendation, tackle X, what they see, you know.
Prioritize prioritize the list, yeah.
Yeah, which 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 may be more, more than 380 of what we have.
That's what we run into, could be a risk we run into.
Yeah, so it's just, at that point, there would be no offsetting of what we need to. I don't, offsetting of taxes isn't the right word, but offsetting of what we know are expenses that are going to come up to support the existing departments we have versus starting a new project. And I'm not arguing that stuff needs to be done. I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
Kind of the way we have to look at it versus saying, do we need the storage area? Do we need the, you know, whatever, right?
Yeah.
And I'm not.
The the other part too, and I didn't get a chance to mention it, is that, you know, I'm looking here that, you know, including payroll for all government employees, you know, I've been saying all along carve out a portion of that to give it to the town employees, especially this year where, you know, the the cola raises that we get, the inflation wiped it all out. So, I mean, our employees are right back to square one. And who do we need to take care of? Our employees. So I think this could go a long way to helping that. That was just another idea.
I mean. Thank God we're seeing signs of inflation coming back down, right?
Yeah, but the damage is done. I mean, I don't see gas prices coming down, food prices coming down. I mean, the two top things to to run a household, I mean.
I I do think. I do think that during the period of COVID, we did take care of people who needed to be taken care of. The the employees who were impacted the most by it, I do believe we took care of them. So and if you if you think about taking some of these dollars and spending them, you know, on some of these projects that we know we have to spend it on anyway, then we are in essence impacting taxes because we're covering things that we know we're going to have to spend money on eventually anyway.
So if I understand it correctly, you're saying that you wouldn't be in favor of including a stipend to all the town employees? Carving out some of that for them. So I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I've never been in favor of giving the town people, the employees, as what we use this money as a bonus because I feel it's better to give them the hourly over the long term.
I totally get it, but are we in a position to give them another coal raise?
Well, if we don't, if we can use this money to to take care of problems we have and not have to spend it, you know, on our budget line item in this, maybe have some money that we can give back in order to pay them more. That's what I'm hoping works out here, so that we can offer raises because we're using this money to offset expenditures that might come up that where we wouldn't have the money for. Again, that's what that's my hope for where how this works.
We do also have the, in the budget, we have the line item for merit increases.
No, yes, I I'm aware of that.
Yep.
Again, prioritizing this would be good. Again, I do agree that, you know, we've, with this money, there's a lot of infrastructure in this town that we over many, many years have always pushed down the road. And we're finally hitting the point where the roads come into an end where it's either catastrophic or not that we don't, we do something about it. It's not, now it's not like we know that we can take care of in 10 years. I think some of these projects, we are at the 10 year window. We we've kicked it down the road long enough, you know, that it might be time that we really, I don't know if it, it probably is time that we actually look at the fact that we have this money. We don't know in five years, we might not have this amount of cash that's available to us to fix these these issues because we never had it, in the past five years, we never had this cash in order to fix these issues. So if we, since we have the, and then by doing that, I hopefully that keeps our tax rate level because we're not actually using any other expenditures or having to add another warrant article to something, you know, which eventually is just going to keep adding more expenditures.
So what I think, so what I think I hear you guys saying is that you you don't want to make decisions on using the the money or making any decisions about using the money now for things such as outlined by the highway department or the fire chief.
Well, the fire, you know, if we want to talk about the fire chief, I'm going to see him on Wednesday night anyways because I go to their every month meetings. I'll tell you right now, I don't know why they can't clean their own gutters. It's not like they don't have a ladder. I mean, the fire department, that doesn't sound bad, but I mean, they're there. They have the equipment.
You realize how tall the building is, right?
I've never actually measured it.
Yeah, it's pretty tall and.
Well, in town, we can't have over 34 feet by code, right?
We're already struggling with employees. So one falls off the ladder, we're down a guy.
Okay, so now we're going to hire a law.
Without a ladder truck or a platform type truck like like Rochester, as I wouldn't recommend trying to clean the gutters.
I'm just throwing out a thing.
I understand.
Sorry that the subject comes out, but it just seems, you know, but I do agree, the roof needs to be definitely leased. We shouldn't have a leaking roof in that facility.
Yeah, but I mean, fixing the roof and those kinds of things should just be.
Well, we're fixing the roof and we're not cleaning the gutters at the same time. Somebody's going to be up there.
I think there are standard maintenance items that should be built into the budget on an ongoing basis.
But the problem is, do we have it in the money to make it in our budget?
Well, let's talk about that when we get to the budget.
Yes.
Okay, but as far as the philosophy for using the ARPA funds, what I'm hearing. What's that?
No, go on.
No, what I'm hearing from you guys is rather than taking the list of the things that we are likely going to have to cover anyway, you'd rather say, okay, let's acknowledge that we have a real problem with improving our town properties, right? In terms of things that have to be major projects to be fixed in this building, for example. Not talking about fixing toilets, I'm talking about major. You guys would rather see us evaluate using those ARPA funds for those types of projects. Even even though we know that any one of those will likely exceed the 300 potentially, right?
Because my philosophy is the cost of repairing this building with the money now is way cheaper than this town ever in the next 10, 15 years, building a new whole town hall because this one's become to the point of disrepair.
Okay.
I'd rather put a 10,000 or 100,000 dollar Band-Aid on this building to get me 15 years than go spend 1.5 or 2 million to put a whole new town office up.
Okay, and you you agree with him?
All I hear is spending money, but.
Yeah, well. Well, we got to spend it in order to keep the building. That's what you just said. I'm following your lead on this one. We got to fix the building to keep it.
Yes, if there's some way we can do it without impacting the, well, the taxpayers in this.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
Because of the because of the ARPA funds.
Right.
Okay, so what I'm hearing then is that we can't make any decisions on using the ARPA funds for these specific line items until we get a full report from the facilities committee with their assessments and recommendations and ballpark costs.
Well, that would be the ultimate nice ideal picture. But again, you know, we have to start, you have to again prioritize, prior. Prioritize, geez, I'll get that word out.
I can't say generalizations.
Sorry, that towards a level two. This building gets used more than everything else.
Sure, sure.
So our money, if we're going to, between a building, we, this one should be the first building, the next building. Well, what's going to be the next most busiest building that we use that needs the most attention? You know, that we want to plan on keeping for the future. Then I mean, we got to have a, but again, we only have so much to spend too because there's other projects we have to take too.
Because that was the only question I had. It's like, okay, we could say.
You know, we're talking about ideas, but you know, in day and age now, ideas are great, but when it comes down to it's like with anything else, it's always about the dollar amount that we're going to spend. If we can fix this whole place up for 50, great, that leaves us two more buildings. But if this building costs 140 to fix, well, then another building is going to have to get sacrificed in order to protect the greater need of the bigger building. You know, you're got, you're have to play the window. I mean, what's going to happen here? And we can't predict since we have a real number of what's going to cost because we can't say this building here, we're going to allocate 50,000 and then realize that 50,000 only took care of half the problems.
So the point, so one of the points I wanted to make on that is, you're correct, I agree with you 100%. It's going to take us time to get to that point where we have a number, which is fine because we've got time on the ARPA funds, right? But what we're saying is, we're not going to spend, we're not going to use ARPA money for these things now because nine months from now or six months from now, we want to have that flexibility to make the decision to spend money on this building. That's all.
If I may. By December 31st, you're going to have to make a decision on the 6704 for Marston and the 40,000 for Birch Lane culvert.
There's no decision to be made on the 67.
Well, it's going to have to come out of operating then.
Well.
Right, and the 40, in other words, if we don't take it out of ARPA, it comes out of operating. That's just the way it goes.
That ain't going to happen.
It's not going to.
It has to. It has to come from somewhere.
It has to come out of ARPA.
Well, then you need to vote.
We need to, that's what I'm saying. So those two actual items.
Hold on, hold on. We also, don't we have a surplus?
But you can't take it out of surplus.
Let me off for a second. I'm just thinking of other ways, like we did last year with the town hall over there. We we.
We don't have a surplus because we don't have end of year numbers. We don't have actuals to this point, so we don't.
Chris was saying before he left that we were we were going to.
We don't have actuals now, so we can't say we have a surplus.
Well, well, if the audit, the draft audit shows 2.6 million in unassigned fund balance, but that cannot be spent without either a town meeting vote or an emergency declaration that DRA approves.
That's our, that's our general fund.
That is your unassigned fund balance that is not committed. It's the excess of revenues over projection and unexpended appropriations.
What we call the general fund, correct?
Yes, that's what it is. He's using a more technical term than we're used to.
I know, I know.
It it is.
You're right. You're absolutely correct. I understand. I know exactly what you're having.
But what I'm saying.
The fund balance, that's.
Before the end of the year, we have to have a place where these expenditures are parked.
Because we just spent the money anyways.
Because we've spent the money.
Correct.
And it either has to go out of like ARPA or we have to take it out of operating, out of your operating budget.
So we're obviously not, it's detrimental to take it out of our operating budget because we're already, we're already too, we're not leaning enough on that budget as it is now.
It would be the 2022 budget.
Yes, it's out of the current budget.
So we can wait and see once Betsy, like, once we get to December, we can see where we are with actuals, right?
Yes, theoretically.
Why theoretically?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, as as long as you remember to do it in December. And I'm sure Betsy will remind you, if I'm not here, if you've got the new administrator in, that something has to be done.
I mean, let's face it, we're not going to have a new December, a new town administrator by the end of December. It's November 14th. We haven't even started interviewing.
Yeah.
Close today, right?
Yeah, but I I'm just letting you know, I'm going to be back in December because a decision will need to be made on at least those two.
Fine.
And from a budgeting standpoint, you're going to have to make a decision on that 170,000 of COVID engineering. Is that a warrant article? You know, is the backhoe a warrant article? What are you going to do about the compacted receiver box? Is that going to be built into the budget? You know, all of these things are going to be part of your discussion as far as budget and warrant articles and.
Just so you know, we're not going to have room in the budget. I mean, I I don't know if you guys have gone for the budget. But I did, and I think I found about maybe 10,000. I think we could pull out.
I found more than that, but that's okay. Well, that's a discussion where we get to that line.
Exactly.
Right, but but you 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 found some number to pull out. I found 200,000 to put back in right here, you know, unless unless we do something with taking them somewhere.
Correct.
Yep.
It's either warrant article or ARPA. Okay.
Well, for what we're talking about right now.
Yes, correct.
Yep.
All right, Lorraine, can you please capture an action item that we evaluate in our last meet meeting in December? Whether the 6704 for Marston well and 40,000 for Birch Lane can come out of the 2022 budget?
Can we do it in the first meeting in December in case we don't have a quarrel?
Sure, sure.
Because as you get close to Christmas, you might not get a meeting.
Yeah, fair. All right, does that cover ARPA?
One question.
Yeah.
I'd be okay with using the 6,704 for the Marston well, just going to put it out there and the 4,000 for Birch Lane culvert right now for the ARPA money.
I would do.
I'd rather wait. December 1st, the first meeting we have, whatever meeting it is.
Okay.
I think we'd have a clearer picture then.
I'll wait till December 1st.
You guys, you know, you're the majority, so.
Doesn't matter. All right, thank you, Sean, for coming in. All right, I know we got assessing. You guys want to get assessing out of the way and then go into? I think we only had one thing.
Then we go into budget.
Do you want to do budget or assessing?
Oh, no, I meant.
The assessing is quick. It's only one.
I know, that's why I.
Let's just get that out of the way.
Yep. I think all we need is a motion there.
Recycle the one intent to cut.
Yeah, exactly.
I make a motion to approve map two, lot one for the intent to cut. Second.
All in favor? Okay, here we go. Now let's go into budget review. Alrighty then. Who wants to start?
Are we discussing where we want to cut off the list? Is that what you want us to talk about?
Well, I mean, I I think. I mean, I don't know that we want to go line by line specifically now, but I I think unless you guys want to. I mean, I don't know that we wanna go line by line specifically now, but I, I think, unless you guys want to.
You wanna just hit big ticket items that you think we need to talk about?
Well, also, like, kind of like, some of the, the, like, the general themes for me, I think, were, you know, I, I think, John, we need to kinda go back and look at some consistency across the departments. You know, in terms of, some people had, like, coal increases that varied, there were different estimates for fuel, and I know the fuel is different, but there were different estimates for that, there were just different assumptions for postage. And I know all of that doesn't add up to a lot, but there should be some consistency. I also, a big one, and Ben, you know, this is to your point, um, in every individual budget area we look at, there's something for cleaning and maintenance. And I think we need to step back and stop looking at that as a departmental thing and start looking at that from a more holistic perspective.
Yeah.
So, so to me, that was kind of a, a big one. So I'm kinda looking at it at that macro level now of, is there, you know, economy of scale? If we start to look at all of that and say, okay, what can we do? Even if we group properties somehow, right? So, right, exactly. So, does that save us anything? Because honest to God, I, I, like, John, I don't know what your number was. I guess what I came up with, that I thought we could, what I could see as a first cut was like twenty-one thousand, was what I came up with.
Well. Not to pick on the highway department, but it's not really there. This is expenditure that we can't do in-house, and we have to expend out. But I'd ditch the highway mowing and vegetation. Drop the thirty thousand right there, take it off for this whole year. Don't do it at all.
How do you not do that?
Just don't do it. Uh, we have to cut something out, I know it's a roadside, it's a landscaping thing, let's call it. I know there's some, because of the, you know, weed control, the knotweed, but again, I'm looking at serious money here to cut.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna get it line by line.
We're not gonna get a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars.
Right.
But that item right there is something where, you know, I mean, I drove, I, on Saturday, I drove around town. I mean, I went down Canard Road, I went over, looked at the new pavement over at Morrison's. You know, I went down Priest Road, I went and just, I had some time to kill, so I just went, drove forty miles down just around to see what the new houses are, where the developments are going, because I sit on planning and I looked all this. And, you know, thinking to myself, because it was just me, maybe the highway department's just a great job that I don't see any of this weeds or this vegetation. I don't know where we're on the major roads that I took. I could find some more, I guess, drive around this Saturday. But I don't know where we found thirty thousand, what the hell we were cutting? Because a lot of these, you got driveways, you got private homeowners, their own land that's abutting the road there. If they got the weeds and the knotweeds, I mean, well, again, I'm saying this out of a way that, whether you disagree or not, you know, I understand, but I'm trying to find a way to cut this budget. And I can see people, if it's in front of your house, take care of it.
What line, what line is that, John?
This is line two, one, uh, two sixty-two.
Okay.
Mowing and vegetation control.
But is not that part of that to keep the brush back, to keep the trees from growing up for sightlines, for safety?
Uh, roadside mowing and knotweed control.
Right, but don't they?
That's what it says in the line item.
Right, don't they mow brush and everything?
Yeah.
In other words, just to keep the trees back. If you don't do it, you're gonna end up with having to go out there and manually cut a lot of stuff, because you need to, you need to have the ditches clear. This isn't landscaping. My understanding is that, and correct me, Ben, if I'm wrong, but I assume this is one of these big flail brush cutters that are going along, just basically keeping the trees from.
Arm and it's just.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's to keep the trees back as much as anything.
Well, I went around and I drove fine.
Right.
If they're gonna grow that much in one year.
It will.
But how far do we get with the tower with thirty grand? I don't care, I'm literally saying, ditch it. That's my philosophy, whether somebody agrees or not, I have more items like this where I'm just gonna ask to be cut.
Was that a pun?
Sure.
Ditch it.
You know, I mean, we can go back and forth with, with what we're on. I'm trying to find a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of stuff that we don't need to, or that we could hopefully get off to not paying this year, that maybe we find money for next year.
If you cut it, perhaps you only wanna cut half of it and go on a cycle where you do half the roads one year and the other half another year, we, we.
Open for suggestions.
You can't.
I'd feel better cutting it in half rather than the whole thing.
Goodness, fifteen grand, perfect. That got some of my goal done, let's move on to another line.
I'm, I'm just saying, if you take it all out this year, you're gonna put it all back next year.
I mean, I'd knock it to five, I mean, again, I don't know how much, how much thirty thousand gets us.
I'm not sure either how.
I just think now, I just think that seems like a lot of money to, to do what they're doing. And again, it's not, I mean, I believe the highway department's a great job, I'm not knocking the highway department for anything that they do, but I was just looking down at big line items, like, I'd rather see that money go into paying our employees more and using the money somewhere, you know, again. And then I've got more to go through, I mean, depending where you wanna go through with these different line items.
If you wanna read off some of your high levels.
Well, I'm just.
Big ones.
You know, my list is in the car. No, I have it written down, I sat there the other day and I went through all these things, so.
We're gonna use a break, we're gonna take five minutes.
And just see if it's on the floor in my car.
Use the restroom.
Okay.
There's components that they did when the building blocks were going in to, like, knock out people, to make it so they could sell the linelands, basically, like, don't put up fences until all the buildings. There's no entity or anything. There's forty, there's about forty houses, maybe forty ten. I think what she meant was nineteen of them, after, like, the restrictions. If, so, if they set, if they set, yeah, if they set a little over, it's a little over. Whatever that over is, it's maybe more than. It probably said that.
Hi, Jim, how are you?
It's too late for the US channels.
Well, of course, they don't label the line, so I don't know. Lorraine, how are you? I mean, you know.
It's a long process, yeah. Well, maybe, I'll make it up. I don't like that. I don't like the pizza.
You know, it's been too life. You know, I think down here, not making. That's why I take budget.
Yeah.
Three months out of the year.
Yeah. Okay.
Man, this is the same or has it changed?
Uh, well, look at the bottom line, it's, well, the one I had, I'm working off the one we had before, that showed a seven point one percent increase. Yeah, it's the same. Do you wanna?
Well.
Do you wanna keep going?
No.
No?
I will, but.
Well, you started.
Well, I started on the thirty grand, I came up with a suggestion to cut.
No, that's fine.
So, I expect we're all gonna pitch in on numbers here?
Yeah, 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 and it, and this doesn't mean we're cutting it, just means these are the things that people are throwing out there. Doesn't mean that thirty K's automatically coming out, or fifteen, or whatever.
Well, when do we decide on that stuff?
Well, not at this meeting.
Okay.
At a, at a future meeting.
So, what do we, what, what's the, I guess, is the general goal of us talking about the budget tonight?
Just to try and, kinda get all these on the table.
John?
Yes?
What's the plan?
Thought he was talking to me.
How much they're gonna pay the new town administrator, for example, by the salary, yeah. Yeah, for, for, you put that, just, like, a place.
Oh, some accident, I don't know.
Please let us know.
Where'd my social services go? It's like the old people.
I did not, on the social services, just an FYI, I did not get information, I just used last year's numbers for all of those agencies.
Which is typically what we do.
Yeah, just.
But have they changed?
We might have actually cut them last year, I think.
Yeah, not all of them, but some.
Yeah, we did, that's right.
Yeah, whatever you cut them to is what I put in.
Yeah. Hey. Betsy, how many of the, with the social services, those are the ones that we only pay once they request it, right?
They request it once every year, and then they also send us how many, how many towns and what they do, and yada, yada.
And, and so, so far this year, they're showing, um, wait, actuals for this year?
They should have all been paid out.
They have already been all paid out. Okay, got it. Um, but we're showing, okay.
So here's a question on social services, again, because we're gonna have to nitpick everything. How do we know that all the money that we're giving these places are actually going for Nottingham residents and not other residents for other towns? And they're just putting it into their fund?
They, they give us numbers.
Okay. I've never seen them, so that's why I'm asking, maybe something to look into.
Can we get copies of the last?
And that's where we base every number here is on what the reports they give us.
No.
No, not necessarily, they request a certain amount of money, and, um, either it's accepted or it's not, and they have to send us what they do. So in other words, all the services do something for the people in this town, whether you ready, right, sex, if you got two hundred people a year, five thousand, but they do send us.
Oh, yeah, yes, that's, yeah, another nice expenditure, it says, uh, SWD, it's the line two ninety-seven, I think. You know, supplies, equipment, and stickers.
Oh, yeah.
Well, why are we paying for stickers? No, I'm serious.
No, John wants to charge for them.
We're paying.
Well, even if you charge for them, you have to gross, gross appropriate, so you count what you charge in revenue and what you buy them for here.
Stickers are so when people go to the dump.
Right.
And it says that you're a resident.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
It's just my, it's.
I don't know how much they cost, but I just.
I just see why, I mean, you could have a sticker from ten years ago, it means the same thing as you have the sticker today.
No, it changes color every year.
Well, I've never had one there, so, whatever. And I still go there all the time. Yeah, famous.
All right.
You know, the purpose we had before was to make sure that we set this goal, you paid, you get a sticker, now anybody can just get a sticker, so.
Well, to John's point, you can, we can pursue charging more, but we still have to have the expense line, right?
That'll be for next year's budget. I gotta work on this year's budget.
Yep, exactly. Did you have other things?
Well, it's just, I mean, there's tons of different things you can kinda look at. It's a tight budget, but, I mean, you really gotta look at every line item to go down. I mean, we literally gotta look at cutting everybody's department by three percent or four, you know. So wherever three percent comes out to, well, when you look down this whole budget, whether some department loses five and some department loses two, you know, whatever, the, the end result seems to be we have to find three percent of this budget in order to get to the four. So we either cut items by.
Don't forget, the budget doesn't have to be four percent. It's not that we have to get this budget to four percent, because we have the offsetting revenues still. It's the tax cap, it's the tax impact.
It's not a spending cap, it's a tax cap. If it was a spending cap, you'd have to get this down to four percent.
So right now, you know, if this is, this is showing a seven point one percent increase in the budget.
Right.
Um, if we, if we say we're gonna have two point two million in revenues, that's gonna offset what the tax cap is. So this could be, this could still be a seven percent increase if we had enough revenue to offset that.
So until we know our revenue, why are we talking about here, so we have to cut?
Well, I think you need to go in with as frugal a budget as you can, reasonably, and you really aren't going to know what your, what your line is until we've had the tax rate set, that's the first thing. You need, you, you need that tax rate setting document.
Right.
And then you need to come up with some projections on revenue based off actuals, which usually don't come in until January, um, as far as the, uh, how much it, it, you're projecting over and above what the four thirty-four has this year.
So we're literally gonna sit there at that end time of February fourth, we scheduled our deliberation, we're gonna have to figure this out, what, in the week and a half or two weeks before?
No, we can't.
Public hearing for the budget.
And we have to, we have to present a draft to the.
Happy on the budget.
We have to present a draft to the budget committee, I think, is like December third, something like that.
Yeah, I think so, I got the schedule right here.
What you just said for information, for what I'm trying to accomplish, or what we're trying to accomplish here, is defeat us towards what we're doing. We have to start cutting here to drop this percentage number down in order, because we don't know what the revenue is gonna be.
Well, we should.
Because if we're gonna wait to base it on the revenue, we could end up still being short, saying, hey, here's the final hour, we're still five hundred thousand dollars off.
No, we have to be able to come up with an estimate for what we think the revenues are gonna be. We can't wait until January.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't have that, we don't, let's work from that number minus this number and say, okay, listen.
We gotta work at it both ways, we gotta work at it both ways, in my opinion.
I just, I see that defeat us, because I just say, you know, I wanna work at it and get it done. And, you know, going through here, we cut every line, I'm sure, cut every line, I've cut everything a hundred dollars. Cut every line at a hundred dollars or whatever, and, you know, I mean, then we'll just see what the number comes in, and then we'll just figure out who gets a little more, who doesn't. I mean, that's just going the backwards way of doing it. And again, I'm not trying to, but if we're gonna try to get this done, we can sit here and pick every line item and cut it all off, but until I know what the revenue's gonna be and where we need to be, well, that's gonna make the decision of what, on some of these line items, what I feel we should cut or what we shouldn't cut. I can't make a decision on something we cut or not cut until I know if it's necessary to make the cut.
Well, at this point, the only number we've had from a department head was the town clerk estimating fifty thousand on motor vehicles. So you've got fifty thousand in revenue that you actually probably can hang your hat on as far as, uh, of offsetting the spending increase. Beyond that, it's pretty iffy unless something else comes in.
I disagree, John, because we've got a historical track record.
Yeah.
Right, it, it, we can't. Right? We can't sit here and say the only thing we know we have is fifty thousand dollars. We can look back historically at what the revenues have been and make an estimate, make a guesstimate. We should be able to do that now.
Yeah. I would, you know, I think the hottest number to estimate is what the state's going to do, and we won't have that number until summer, at the earliest, next summer.
Well, it doesn't make any sense. How can we do a budget if we don't have, if we need the state number, do our budget?
Well, you can, you can make a guess as to what the state's going to do. I mean, that's, it is difficult. Last year, they had, what was it, a hundred million dollars that they then distributed out unexpectedly. This year, I wouldn't wanna bet on them having a whole lot left over this year.
That was unanticipated one-time revenue.
Well, right, but, like I said, we...
Betsy, can we get, is it possible for us to get historical trends of what we've had for revenue? Okay, so, all I'm saying is, we need to look at that, and then we can make some best guesses, because we can't wait till summer, September, we can't wait till January, so we have to make some decisions based on what it's been.
And let's take the revenues from last year and just cut them five percent, use that our number.
No.
We have a window.
I disagree with that, because we've always been conservative with our revenue.
Well, we're being really conservative.
So, it doesn't, it doesn't do us any good to be over...
But our largest, our largest revenue comes from people registering cars, and this year has been historically, because the fact that cars haven't been available for people to buy, so that number is probably gonna be lower.
No. People are buying more expensive cars.
But are they selling as many, because you can't get them?
But Lori gave us her number that she thought it was gonna be, what, like one point three this year, or something like that?
She says a lot of the people are buying mobile homes, RVs. Perfect. So, then we already have a number for Lori.
I think we've got a pretty solid guess that this year's gonna be a hundred thousand over the projection. Your projection for this year was one point two million. The MS4, we've got one point three million. We're estimating a hundred thousand dollars more based on the actual trends this year. Now, what's next year going to be, I'm not willing to commit to another hundred thousand, but I think you'll have at least fifty, the way that, the way that it's been trending.
So, you're saying the money coming into the town's gonna be fifty thousand dollars more than it was last year?
It'll be a hundred thousand more.
Or it was fifty?
This year. We've already factored that in for the tax rate setting. In other words, the MS seven, the MS seven thirty-seven, where you projected revenue that went to the town meeting, was one point two. When Chris did the 434 in the summer, he did one point three, and based on our actual revenues to date, I think that one point three is still a solid number.
Okay, so, the estimate for next year, for what's gonna, is what's gonna offset this budget, should be around that one point three.
Well, I would assume you're gonna have another increase, just like we did this year, so I do a million three five?
That's my point. So, that, that's, we use that number.
That's what I was just saying. Sorry, we're not communicating eye to eye. I think you're going more verbal, and I'm going more just straightforward, literal, and that we're just, we're losing each other on that, but, right, that's what I was...
So, that is the ballpark number we should be using to say, okay, where does the budget need to be? If, if we have that revenue, where does the budget need to be?
So, this is what I'd like to see. You take that number, like what math that you did earlier, from what we have lined budget here, and say, this is the amount. Using that figure, we need to cut one hundred and twenty thousand, and then we go through the budget, and we go, how are we cutting a hundred and twenty?
You told me that number was about a hundred and seventy, two hundred?
Yeah, yeah. I forget now what the number I told you was, because I'd have to recalculate
That's what I wanna know.
Based on revenue.
If we have, if I know that says, listen, John, you guys need to sit here at the board, and we need to cut a hundred and seventy thousand in order to hit the four percent, then let's start hammering numbers and saying what we need to do to cut in order to make that, that work. Or what can't we cut, or what should we cut, and start working on that number to find a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's what we need to do.
Are you good with this?
I think the number...
If you have another, if somebody, that's literally how I...
No, no, I agree.
Don't know how to address a budget without saying, you know, I've got X amount of money, but I wanna spend this, but I can't. I gotta find a way to say how much I can spend.
Yeah, well, the big, the big issue you're going to face, for the elephant in the room, are the firefighters, because they are not part of your cap coming forward. I think, I think none of it was in your cap. You counted it for the default budget, so it's in the default budget. But for the cap, you've got three hundred thousand dollars in expenditures we have in this budget for the firemen, which is not showing in that bottom line number of what you need to cut. The cut, the cut is probably bigger than seven percent. It's, that number is seven percent when you count the firefighters. This is prepared as it would apply to your default budget, not as prepared as it would apply to the cap. Does that make sense, what I just said?
Not one bit, probably anybody at home, or anybody else.
No, no.
Let Betsy do it.
You did the warrant article for the firefighters in the year going forward.
Yep.
So, what you're seeing in that budget, that projected budget, includes that going-forward amount, which was not in last year's budget. So, it's kind of a play with numbers as far as that goes. It was voted in last year, so you need to be going forward.
Correct, yeah.
But in last year's budget, it was not in the actual budget, it was a warrant article.
Yeah.
For this year, for two thousand twenty-three, yeah.
Right, we have a budget change in the fire department salary of one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Yes.
From our previous budget, towards proposed budget, and that reflects the fact of having four new full-time employees, or six new time employees.
Yeah.
That's why it went up one hundred and forty-six point three percent.
But look, look down, two or three lines under the 2022 budget.
What line?
Yeah, we had three hundred thousand.
That's the three hundred thousand. That was in the...
Last year's budget.
Well, no, that was the, no, it wasn't in the budget. That's the total that the, was warned to the voters, that this is what it's going to cost. You approved the three hundred. So, for purposes of this, compared to the default budget, the three hundred thousand's gonna be in the default budget. So, it's in that line, that K column. So, that number, four, seven, one, nine, at the bottom, is not the real number you're working off from as far as the cap goes.
What four, seven, one, nine number?
If you look at the very bottom line of everything...
What, John?
Oh, okay. You're, I'm...
This page here.
I can't, I...
I know, I'm with you. The, the, the four, seven, one, nine is the, the base that we're comparing it to, right?
Correct.
Yes. But that includes the three hundred thousand.
Right. It's not what the warrant article was.
Why do we care about that right now? What, what, what we're looking at right now is, and I get it with the default budget. I understand with the default budget, I'm struggling with the operating budget.
So, so, you're, you're, the warrant article, as I understand it, that was approved, was four million, four hundred and nineteen thousand...
Yep.
Eight seventy-seven.
Yep.
That can go up for, that, when you're adjusted for revenue, is going, is what you're comparing. So, therefore, the total in column M is comparing against that four point four as far as the cap goes. This document was not designed to deal with the cap, because we hadn't even talked about the cap process. This is comparing with the...
This is comparing operating...
This is comparing with what the, what the budget was, including the three hundred thousand in column K.
Yeah.
However, for the cap, the three hundred thousand is not part of your base. It's not counting towards your tax cap. Your tax cap doesn't account for that three hundred thousand.
But it's in this budget.
It's in...
I mean, some form of it is in this budget. So, we, last year was four, seven, nineteen, four million, seven nineteen, right? That include...
No.
Yeah, that was the operating budget.
With the three hundred thousand added in.
Correct.
Right, but the operating article, which is what you're going to have to use for the tax cap, now you've decided it's only the operating budget, is four million, four nineteen, eight seventy-seven, not four million, seven nineteen, eight seventy-seven. It's three hundred thousand dollars lower.
But that had to go into the operating budget this year.
Yes, but the tax cap doesn't make allowance for that.
Oh.
In my opinion. That's why I said, when we were discussing the tax cap, if you do it with the operating budget, you have three hundred thousand less because of that, compared to if you do it off the warrant articles.
But if we included that warrant article, we'd have to include them all.
Yes. So, consequently, the, the cap number is gonna be quite a bit more than that seven percent number that you're working on there. Because of that, without counting revenue, if you do point oh four times that, you're adding, oh, say, a hundred and seventy thousand, so you're at four million, six hundred thousand, let's say. And this proposed budget is five million, so you're looking at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars above the cap.
You're saying we are now four hundred and fifty thousand dollars above the cap?
Right.
Not accounting for revenues?
Correct.
Okay.
Because of that three hundred thousand, and how you count it, because you're not, not including warrant articles in the cap.
You know what's funny? Sorry, just wanna make light of the situation, but the people that care about the budget got so confused, I think they left.
That's what worked. Okay.
You come to that next budget meeting, ah!
I think, I think that the budget committee is going to have real trouble...
Oh, yes, we are.
...hitting within the cap. And, in, in...
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, that's what I...
Right. You're absolutely, it was a lot worse than what you were thinking, John.
Okay, again, that's...
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not afraid to point out, you know, these downfalls, and I'm not afraid to sit there, and when somebody says, oh, you can't cut this, I'm gonna cut it.
All right.
And, and I...
And I'm gonna blame it on whoever said yes to the four percent. It's their fault they have to cut.
I think, I think you're right. I, I don't, I recommend against that. I recommend that you take this budget, hand it to the budget committee, and say, here, you guys wanted the tax cap? Get it down to the number you want, and then we'll fight you at the town meeting.
No, that's irresponsible for the select board to do.
I, I, I don't think so.
I don't actually, you know, sitting on that board and knowing what I want, I'd rather go with some here, because they're gonna pick it apart anyway, so it doesn't, I mean, I'd rather just look like I, I did my part, which I'm gonna try to do my part the best I can, but I know they're gonna pick it even, pick it even more off what we even recommend.
Well, by, because of the cap, they have to pick it.
Ah, and again, I don't mind pointing out everybody that voted for the cap.
Betsy.
This is the reason why we have it.
Do you have a worksheet? Two things. First off, can you please get us some historical data on revenue? And if, and can you, if, can you possibly do, like, in this year, here's what you estimated, and here's what it was actually? Is that possible? Like, say, for maybe three years? Because then that tells us how good were we at estimating what we thought it was gonna be, or how conservative we were, right? And that, that should help inform us. And then, are you guys keeping a spreadsheet, I think you are, that shows at this current level of spend in the operating budget, when we factor in estimated revenue, here's where we are relative to the cap?
There is a spreadsheet attached to this one. Can you look at it? There's another, there's another page with this spreadsheet on it.
Oh, oh, I know what you mean, tabs.
Yeah.
Workbooks.
Yeah, is that what she's referring to, precedent on the tax cap?
Because that, because, because to John's point, we need to know, we need to know what the levers are doing on both sides, on the operating budget, plus on the tax cap. Right? So...
Oh, it's not exactly which one, but we'll turn it into what you want.
Okay, that sounds good.
See, I had...
I have the worksheets on the revenues.
Okay.
See, I had thought, until we made the decision tonight regarding the operating budget, that it was a smaller hill than it is, but I think it's a pretty big hill because of that three hundred thousand with the firemen.
See, you know, when I just, again, maybe I'm doing simplicity here, but, you know, I took last year's two thousand two budget, and then I took that proposed budget this year, and the difference came to three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, because we had that three hundred thousand as a line item in our budget.
But it wasn't out of the operating warrant article, was it?
No.
See, you're, you're now...
The reason why I think we put it in last year was for the fact of getting it in, so that would automatically be a reoccurring line item for this year, under the fact that we knew when we approved this last year, that he might not expend that money this year, because we knew that he wasn't, we weren't sure if he was gonna be able to find the employees to fill the expenditure of that three hundred thousand. But we put it in anyways, in case the fact that he did come up with the four employees in a very quick and timely fashion, which obviously, you know, we were preying on it, even knowing the situation we were in with finding employees, but that it would already be there.
I thought you put seventy-five in, and two hundred and twenty-five, you knew you'd have to add the following year. And it was in a warrant article, not in the other...
Here's the warrant article.
I don't recall that, but...
The warrant article says, shall the town vote to add three full-time personnel to the fire department, which calls for salary and benefits for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and further to raise and appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars for the current fiscal year, such sum representing four months of additional costs attributed, attributable to the increase in salary and benefits. The estimated tax cap for twenty-two is zero point zero nine two. So... Basically, we were saying seventy-five for what we, what was the remainder of this year, and then the two twenty-three for next year. I'm sorry, two twenty-three would be the two twenty-five. So...
But the seventy-five was in the warrant article, not the operating budget?
Yep.
So, if the tax cap is off the operating budget, it doesn't include that seventy-five, or the two hundred and twenty-five?
Okay.
Does that make sense, I mean, what I just said?
Yep. All right.
So, you've got over four hundred thousand dollars, not counting revenue, that you're looking at, that against the cap, this cap increase of somewhere around a hundred and seventy thousand allowed?
Okay, so, I think we've enjoyed enough of this painful conversation for tonight. Do you agree?
Yeah. It's not going away, so we can push it down the road, like everything else, but, fine.
Well...
I just wanna make sure, I wanna make sure I just put in my little two cents, just when I don't disagree.
Do you wanna keep going, then?
Hey, I'm used to staying till ten thirty at night. I do that on planning boards, so...
Go.
I mean, but you two, if you wanna go, we can look at this tomorrow.
No, you...
We can wait for another board member to show up. We have another two weeks.
You, you go, and then I have some.
Well, then, go right ahead, because I'm going through every line item right now.
Well, mine aren't as big as yours. But, you're not gonna like this, but...
Well, we have under the rec salary things, we had, you know, new seasonal, she put in there for narrative for where increase was, for seventeen thousand dollars.
I cut, asked to cut that.
Yep, that's gone right there.
Say, which, what was that?
We're not gonna hire a new seasonal part-time facility, mainest person.
And what are the odds of fighting lifeguards, too?
Well...
All right, let's, let's, let's go, let's go section by section.
Yeah.
Rather than all the places. Yeah, yeah.
So, the only cut you've actually made at this point...
We haven't made any cuts yet.
Oh, I thought you made the roadside mowing.
We're, we're making note of things that people would like to cut.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Because we still have to go through the process of voting and agreeing on it. Okay, executive department, anything?
The five thousand dollar Pawtucket Lake advisory?
So, that was to cover the, help support the milfoil. We'd watch a program. No, not we'd watch it, the... Thank you. What line item is that, John?
Twenty-two.
Why do we have one that says line item and the other one has the line item? Like, what is C? What's the purpose of C being a line item number?
Where are you?
Yeah, we see that.
Oh, yeah, they're one off all the way through.
Right, they're off. They're not the same, because one says twenty-one, one says twenty-two.
I don't know what you mean.
Yep.
I hear.
A and C do not agree.
Line. They're both numbers. They're just not.
I don't have A on mine.
Yeah, A probably shouldn't have printed.
Okay, well, then we don't use A number, we just use C.
We'll eliminate A. So on C, it's twenty-one.
Yep. Printing of the, the.
You know what? I can make a great statement on that right there.
What?
Cause it's off some more people, but what the hell?
What?
You know, if we have to cut twenty-five hundred there, I mean, I'm just, I'm just gonna get myself into a mood, but.
You're talking about the Pawtucket Lake Advisory?
Well, that's, I know where the money's going.
Yeah. Yep.
You know?
Yep.
So.
Did you say take twenty-five hundred out or? Yeah, cut it in half. I mean, I've seen, I know all the problems that are going there, and I, but you know, I don't want people to think that I'm impartial from cutting other things just because I live there and I have that access, because this is a town issue. This is not a personal issue. This is not a place because of where you live. This is what's been, you know, for the whole town. So, you know, I'm looking at this as an overall objective of what's better and not making this a personal issue. All right? On any of these line items that I have to cut. So I'm sure I can find some affiliation with it, but I have to do something here. I'm benounced, I didn't vote for the four percent. I didn't think it was a good idea, but if that's what they wish, then I'm gonna have to work to get it there. So when you see some of these line items that people see, it's just not gonna be good. It's gonna be ugly.
The, um, the printing of the town report line six is two K, two K less, two thousand less, because they're cutting back on the, the number.
What line was that?
Uh, six. They're cutting back on the number that they're producing.
So.
What's that?
We end up throwing away a lot of them.
They're cutting from five hundred to two fifty. Yeah.
Yeah, because it's available electronically.
Yep.
It really.
So that's gonna cut that proposed budget from forty-four hundred dollars down to?
Twenty-five, it is.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a.
Nineteen hundred.
What line was that, six?
Six.
So you're taking two thousand or nineteen hundred?
Kelly, I thought Kelly told me it was gonna be about twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred? I don't remember the email.
Yeah, she sent it to me.
Mine is twenty-five hundred.
No, the cost is twenty-five hundred.
New number is twenty-five.
Right.
So you're taking nineteen hundred out.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, I'm writing how much you're taking out on the side here. Okay.
Lorraine, you don't have to capture all these numbers. Because we're getting listed.
We're just gonna do a wall in our pieces of paperwork and let people hear that we're voicing our opinions on.
Well, I assume there'd be a massed emotion at the end for us to make those changes, or not?
No, I'm not prepared to do that tonight.
Okay.
I'd just like to see that if we get to a, okay, this is, look, tonight we accomplished a number, or theoretically, we accomplished a number saying, look what we did here. Now, where we have to fine tune this a little longer, because it, it's gonna be a process. So at least when the next Budget Committee comes up Thursday, I can at least say, hey, this is what we did today.
Yep.
And then hopefully we can keep the discussion minimal and actually get home at a reasonable time.
Um, I got a question in fun. I'm glad you're here.
Thanks to the hot seat.
No, 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 it's easy. Um, and Betsy can help with this, too. So, under Executive Department, line twelve, uh, service contracts, equipment and maintenance, that's gone up by nine thousand. Did that increase because of a police department number getting added in, in there?
You're talking about the executive one?
Yeah, line twelve.
Um, we switched over to, um, P A.
Yep.
And what's, or I put it more specific to.
So that's not. Okay, because I saw it under P D, under P D, there was, that's all, that's all those. So there was some reduction in your budget because of that?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. That's what I thought. Okay, do you guys have anything else in, uh, executive? Um. Yeah. You guys good with that? Executives?
Yeah.
John?
Sure.
Town clerk? I'm gonna throw this one out there. Um, I don't support the increases in salary. And the reason for that is because of the fees that they collect. So they've got their hourly rate, and then they also collect the percentage for the fees, or then, based on the number of transactions. Which for this year, year-to-date so far is about forty-four thousand dollars.
I thought she said it was fifty-three.
Year-to-date, the numbers that I get from these guys.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, whichever, right? Yeah.
So you're saying the thirty-four hundred dollars right there?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And it's an elected official, so.
Yep. I agree.
And we were nice enough to compute, and again, you know, their hours of operation did reflect to what they wanted to instead of what other people really wanted, so.
Yep. Agreed. Elections. So. Uh, I'm sorry, did you guys have a town clerk? Okay. So elections. I was a little confused. So I know what they, what they built in here was, they built in an extra election because they don't know what's gonna happen with the primary, the presidential primary. And, um, is it, yeah. Which would be twenty-twenty-four.
Oh, moving it up. Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
If it moves into December.
If it moves into December, because New Hampshire wants to hold on to its first in the nation.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why they increased that to cover potentially that election. Which, again, um, I'd love to say, let's cut that and let's wing it, but I don't know if that's prudent.
I don't know if we want to chance it.
I know, I know. I've gone back and forth on it. Um, but I was also confused. So. I was confused about, and this is, I guess, a question for D. Why the line thirty-six, salaries for election workers went down? And why would that go down if we're planning for an additional election? And why did the supervisors go up? But the election workers went down?
Good question.
So I need, and again, we'll have to get that from D. I don't understand what the logic was.
This is why we're doing this right now, so that next meeting, we can have an answer for this year. That's very good. Yep.
Yep, exactly. Um.
I think it might be that you had a primary, a state primary, a state election, as well as town meeting this year.
But that doesn't answer why does, why does supervisors go up and election workers go down?
She was short this year, wasn't she, the number of workers?
Didn't seem to be.
They did more with less, I think.
Hmm, we'll ask her.
Yeah.
We'll ask her. Um, what was the other question I had relative to that, too, though? Shoot, just jumped on my head. Dang it.
Oh, God.
I know, it sucks getting one.
It'll come back to you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's little things like the new filing cabinet. I mean, it's only five hundred dollars, but, you know, depending on where we have to go.
There's a phone in there, too.
And why, why was that needed?
I think because they're using the town clerk's phone.
They don't have one.
But. But how significant of a problem is that?
She said it's very, because if the town clerk's on the phone, they can't use it.
Well, did you get the tax collector's phone?
I'm just reiterating what she told me. If you, when she comes here, we can, she was here before and we went and went over it, but.
Yeah.
She expressed the need for it pretty passionately.
She used to have one years ago.
What did she call?
I don't know if it's just because of the state or something like that, because I've never worked that job, so.
I remember when I was growing up and we shared the phone with three neighbors.
I can remember, we ended up on an eight-party line. Two of the neighbors knew everything that was going on, because they just listened to it all the time.
Exactly, exactly.
An eight-party line.
Okay. Oh, yeah, Betsy. Can you, sorry, you're gonna walk away with that, action items. With regards to the supervisors, do you know or can you find out when the last time they had increase was? Okay.
The what?
But I have it exactly.
Okay. All right. Financial admin. Oh, okay. Tax collector. Why is there a thirty-three percent salary increase for the tax collector?
Because the tax collector fees went away.
Oh.
Not being able to be, just being fixed.
When did we do that?
Yeah.
And was that our decision? I don't remember having that conversation.
Last year.
Okay. I gotta go back and look at the minutes. Okay. Doki-doki.
But if you notice in the budget, they dropped the fees twenty-five hundred and the salary went up thirty-nine, so.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Uh, you guys got anything under financial administration?
Uh, I was just gonna say, you know, you look at the past couple of years, and it's only five hundred bucks, but it's still five hundred, keeping the postage at four grand instead of a forty-five.
Well, I think we need postage, we need to look at it across the board, because everybody's all over the place on how much they think it's gonna go up. And I think it should just be, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but let's assume like, we know if, what an increase in postage is gonna be, and then it should be a percentage you apply to whatever people had before.
But do we bill it out as every department? You know, we're getting these numbers because that department knows how much they're billing out. So if we put it as one big pool, how do we know which department's actually expenditure and which one isn't?
No, I, I get that and I agree. All I'm saying is that if we know that postage is gonna go up twenty cents, then everybody should be using that twenty cents as how they estimate what, regardless of what their volume is, they should be using that twenty percent to project what their new number is gonna be.
Well, they're projecting a twelve percent here.
Yeah, exactly. And, and the numbers are different all over the place. And I know it's not a lot, but again, that's, there should be some consistency. Anything in assessing?
Well, because, yeah, if, yeah, again, I'm gonna go back. We'll get to postage, but that's just something where I'm just gonna mark it as a five hundred dollar discount for now.
And that was for the tax.
Yep.
Collector. Assessing? I didn't have anything here. I mean, that went down. Legal?
We actually only spent so far this year twenty-seven thousand dollars on attorney fees. I wanna, I wanna say that I'm shocked.
Do we anticipate anything being put against this line? That twenty-seven that we've spent year-to-date, do we anticipate that changing?
Yeah, it'll go up some.
Okay.
I get monthly bills from them.
Okay.
I sign those things, too.
Hence why we don't wanna go after one person for a treat.
I understand. It's wild looking another way to find the money.
Okay.
Well, twenty-one, we were high on our budget, you know, then we actually, what we spent, this year, we're here.
It's one of those, though, you never know.
Mm-hmm, like welfare.
You never know when a lawsuit's gonna come out.
Can hit a bad year.
From somewhere.
Yeah, people suing the town. Because they don't like something.
Personnel, admin. Uh, I mean, a lot of that, we don't have any control over because it's insurances.
And the big reason insurances are up, because we've added firemen.
Yep.
Also affect retirement.
Yep. Planning. Oh. Line.
So basically, on the personal limit, this, you know, we start going all these insurances, Medicare, retirement funds, I mean, there's nothing we can even take off those.
The only way to take off those is take off the salary that drives it. In other words, you have to cut the salary in some department to drive it.
I got you, right. We don't pay them enough, so never mind, we can't cut them, so.
Um, hey, Betsy. Line one oh three, which is planning board dues and conferences. Is that percentage change calculation right? Four hundred and ninety-nine thousand?
Yeah, because it was only one dollar in last year's, but in this year's budget.
I'm not sure, I think I'd be able to these.
Yep.
Not for the planning board. Or training sessions and education.
Yeah, but, so if you go from one dollar to five hundred, the percentage change is four hundred and ninety-nine thousand percent, is it? Okay.
The, the, if, I think it was COVID, if you look at the actual for twenty-one and the budget for twenty-two, nobody was going any conferences. Everything was electronic, remote.
Okay. Um.
You know, I wanna say on that one there, my own personal opinion, put that to two fifty. We just cut it in half.
Dues and conferences.
Because most of all those conferences, and I know the members of the board on there, any of us that are sitting on that board that work a normal nine-to-five job can't make it to any single conference, because the state always has their conference on a Tuesday at like eleven o'clock, where the only people that can really require is if you're retired or you, you're your own boss, and that you can find that time. Because I've never been able to find the time off in order to make it to a conference, because they're not offered on a Saturday afternoon, and they're not offered at a seven o'clock Sunday evening. They're only offered at ten o'clock.
That's always been my problem with things for us.
So, and I, every member on the board that's sitting there on the board, I don't think the change. I don't think the changeovers wanna be that much unless a bunch of people anticipate on running to join the planning board, which for some reason, that's never been a highly contested seat of an election is for people to join the planning board.
Because it's a horrible board.
Just, trust me, I know, I've sat on it for eight years, so I can tell you that I just, I mean, it's only two fifty anyway, it's not like it's the end of the world, but it's, that's how I defend that comment. So I just wrote that as a little note that we cut two fifty off that line.
Okay, um, all right, on the master plan.
What about, uh, oh.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, master plan. So.
We got postage, uh, oh, that's, yeah, we get that back, never mind.
Yep. I think we should cut the seven hundred dollars for the master plan. I mean, I'm sorry, the thousand.
Again, like I said earlier, we're at the ten-year window, but with the amount of jobs that are coming in to the planning board, and I mean by jobs as subdivisions, uh, I mean, they're talking about this, that even though I know the goal is there, but I'd cut that seven hundred because I don't think that, we haven't even got to the stage where usually we elect a committee to be on this and this, and we haven't even got close to even getting to the decision of what we're doing.
That's where.
Take the seven hundred right off.
Well, it's a thousand.
A thousand.
Take the thousand right off, or put it at one, one dollar line item.
I'm with you, right there, that's where I was headed.
It's a one dollar line item.
And I think we should.
That's us a grant.
I think we should take off the, uh, the dues for sixty-five hundred.
See, now, the question is that, is I actually know the good that goes into that? But there isn't a, I don't think there's a way we can actually say that we can pay thirty-five hundred to them and not sixty-five, because that's based on your, um, your, how many employee, people you have in town are employees, so they have a set fee of what it needs to be involved. Uh, do I find it absolutely terrible? And again, this is why we're not gonna have any representation there, so Stratford Regional is something where, again, we don't pay them, so we have no representation. Now, are they willing to help us in, in case of need? Sure. But it ain't gonna be the arm we're gonna be resting, or the shoulder we're gonna be resting our head on because we don't pay them anything, and we don't get a vote in anything they say.
Well, we pay for contract services, too, with them.
That's the only good part of it, right, but we, we pay a minimum amount for that, too. For what Blair does, I don't think we're, I mean, I think we're getting a heck of a deal on him, but fine, cut the sixty-five hundred, he's gonna, Ed's gonna come in anyways to pitch for it, but.
Sixty-four ninety-nine?
Sure.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's the option of the budget committee could put it back in, or. Tom's shaking his head, yes. The.
We didn't have it on there last year, so you were successful.
We definitely discussed this last year, whether or not
Yeah.
they wanted to pay you to be a member, and it didn't sound like we actually got anything and couldn't get to piece me.
I, I didn't get anything from Ed that made me say, oh, we have to have this. Now, they have the option of going to the deliberative sess- session.
And pitching it.
And pitching it and getting it back in, and then that, that's great, because that's the voters' side. Anything else on planning? Um, one question I had on zoning, and this is just lack of understanding. Like, I know on planning, Ed said that they recoup costs for, um, advertising and postage and that kind of stuff.
You pay your fees in order to do, like, if you were gonna do a subdivision, you have to pay the town to pay all the stamps and to pay all the stuff, letters that go out. Now, the town sent all the letters out to all the people for you.
Yep.
But you pay the town.
Right.
So we automatically get reimbursed all the fees that we
Yeah.
that the board puts out front.
Sure.
They get them back from the applicant.
Yep. Does, is there any corresponding process with zoning?
It's the same thing, yeah.
So we do, we do get from zoning, there is some offsetting revenue as well?
If you need to appeal or whatever, you, you'd have to, and this basically comes, the, the fees for this, you know, we're talking about, is basically the fees that you're gonna find, it's for butters, for notifications.
Yep.
It's really where it comes to.
Got it, okay.
You know, that's the biggest thing, is that everybody knows, and then the listing in the newspaper, which I don't even know why we do that anymore, but that's still another, it's one of those formalities.
Oh, I know what my question was, back on the, um, election workers. Does the school budget pay for the election workers for their deliberative session? Or is that coming out of the town budget?
Their deliberative session, that's completely separate.
So that does come out of theirs?
They pay our supervisors of the checklist to be there?
They should pay it. I mean, do you guys agree?
Yeah. Yeah, why are we paying for the school? Well, we're paying for it, but just why are we paying directly out of what we're, we're trying to cover here?
Yeah.
We'll give that to somebody else to discuss. Now, here's one.
Where are you?
I'm on line one thirty-two, not too far down.
Yep.
See that twenty thousand we have there? If we actually did the expenditure onto the building, you know, spending the, some of that ARPA money on fixing everything in here, we could cut off twenty grand off that line item.
So you're saying line one thirty-one?
No.
Well, so line one thirty-two, we have, we have, we're spending money every year on this building, it's, oh, that's for alarm monitoring, all right, so maybe not everything on there, but.
Rodents, fire extinguish inspection, there's a lot of things that are.
But can we fix most, I mean, are those fixable items or there's just constant maintenance items?
They're annual items, annual fees. There, there may be other stuff in there besides what's written down there, Betsy. Repairs, if they've had to fix a window. The work on the toilets today would go in there? It's nice, we do have some people that don't bill us.
Like, all of this stuff, all of this stuff that's in this section is really just kind of like the ongoing operations.
Mm-hmm.
Right? It's, it's not anything that is like, it's not anything that we could offset with ARPA funds, because it's just basically keeping the buildings running.
So with the SAU being at the Old Town Hall, shouldn't they be responsible for shoveling and mowing?
We're, we are, in essence, the landlord.
The same could be said for the school building. Taxpayers, I mean.
Well, I mean, I don't know if that's the same.
We don't, does somebody shovel the school, the janitors, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. But, I mean, and again, there's an agreement that was, um, made between this, the SAU and us, that outlined specifically who did what.
I don't remember that being in there, but okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, essentially, we're the landlord, and they, they, they were paying their, they were paying one of the utilities, right, Betsy, because we had no control.
I'm billing them back for the electric.
Okay. Right.
Either way.
Okay. So again, I, I just, I think that whole section, that whole building section and across some of the others, we should look at what we can do maintenance-wise, and maybe we can't fix it for this year, but I think for next year, we should be looking at a more thoughtful plan about how we handle maintenance across all of the buildings.
Be helpful if we had their, uh, end of, uh, report there.
Yeah, I know, I know. Police. The one question I had on this was on one ninety-six, you've got the, the cruiser, right, and is the, that, that's just the cruiser, is the outfitting for it in line one eighty-nine?
Looks to be.
Yeah, they're two separate lines, so.
Got it.
Uh, exactly, the equipment line is the outfit of it, and then the cruiser is the cruiser.
Just, just wanted to make sure that. Yes, indeed.
We'll leave that up to the budget committee to see what they wanna cut.
Fire. Anybody got anything for fire? I know I'm not supposed to just yell fire.
Two thousand dollars for mileage.
What line has that been?
I was looking, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, I'm in the, uh, building inspector. Whether it's at, uh, depending which one it is, two thirty-nine or two forty?
Two thirty-nine. Well, it's been sixteen hundred so far this year.
That's because he's using his own vehicle.
You've had his, his mileage expenses through August? He hasn't submitted since then? He's using his own vehicle?
I, I, I get that.
Yeah.
This is where recycled cruiser could help, but.
They have plans for that.
Yes. Not this year, obviously. Down the road, maybe.
Maybe the new one.
Yeah.
Could you guys give, can you give Dale a lift whenever he needs?
He'd love that, only the backseat, though.
I tried to get Gunn to let me ride in the backseat once and he wouldn't.
Should've gave better reason.
Building inspector? I mean, there's. What's that?
I'm just thinking to myself.
Oh, there's really no increase except for one that we approved. Emergency management. There's only one, two in there. Highway.
Well, we already talked about the mowing, the roadside mowing.
Yep, we got that.
So we're only taking fifteen?
Uh, cut it in half.
Right, okay.
Yep.
I guess I don't understand, we're gonna have to ask, this is highway salary part-time, right? And we budgeted, and then we spent, and we budgeted, and then we didn't really spend it, and then we budgeted again, but we're not spending any.
I, go ahead, sir. I was confused between line two fifty-eight and two fifty-nine. So two, two fifty-eight, two fifty-nine is just overtime to full-time employees when they have to plow or do something like that, right? Okay.
That never seems low.
What's that?
Well, we didn't have a lot of snow last year. I was just thinking it was kinda low, but.
Well, you think it's low there, but so he has an increase of five thousand dollars there, and then he still has a line for six thousand, so he's actually, that's eleven thousand dollars for to pay our old guys overtime and then to find somebody else to do it, but if our guys are doing the overtime, wouldn't that cut the part-time guy?
Yeah.
Right? If we're paying the guy to stay overtime, he's obviously doing more work. Is there a reason for a part-time guy?
Well, if he's going out this year, they're probably gonna need all the help they can get. Because there's only gonna be a three-man shop, right?
Right?
Well, he's only gonna be out December to.
But pretty much throughout the winter.
Yeah, the whole snow season.
Yeah.
Right.
I think you gotta leave both in.
Yep. I mean, a, a lot of what he has here is just driven by the cost of materials.
All right, so we have salary, salary, full-time, part, overtime, part-time, and then hired equipment plowing. People that he would use for the part-time are the plowers, right? So why wouldn't that be on, under, uh, hired equipment plowing?
But does, does he have a vehicle that a part-timer can plow in?
Well, we got plenty of vehicles, not enough employees.
Especially with him gone, we'll have, we'll have a whole vehicle we need, so we're not gonna have to hire a truck.
John, can you get us a, a breakdown of two fifty-eight, two fifty-nine, two sixty, and two sixty-two? Let's understand
Yeah.
what's in each one of those.
Okay.
That would be great. Okay, anything else in highway? Shim and Seal Coat, I mean, that's pretty much the same as we do every year.
So, again, we say Shim and Seal Coat, that's what we do every year, but obviously, we haven't hit a number big enough. So, you know, the stuff that we, we just, and again, that's just for tonight, we'll get to that for a different time around, but remember, numbers now, you know, what we're used to paying, we might have to not, we might not be able to do that anymore. Shim and Seal Coat might have to go down to two hundred and seventy-five thousand. We might have to cut twenty-five thousand off that, so another road doesn't get done, but that's the incurred cost of the four percent. Just to keep that clear, some things aren't gonna get done.
Well, let's ask, let's ask Sean the hypothetical question, right? Let's say, what, what would the impact be if we cut that Shim and Seal Coat to, do you wanna say two fifty, two seventy-five?
Well, we're not cutting the salaries or any of that from the highway board, we're just cutting down the jobs that we're expenditure on.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Two fifty. See what the impact would be on that?
Yeah. Can you just, John, you got that?
Yeah, that's the, uh, line two eighty?
Correct.
Yeah, just ask him what the impact would be if we produced it to, to, uh,
Two fifty.
Two fifty. Uh, Shim and Seal Coat.
It's highway contracted road maintenance. And again, it's devastating for the infrastructure of this town by having to cut items like that, because now we're just, again, kicking the worm down, kicking the worm, sorry, it just came on wrong, kicking the thing down the road of just not taking care of something, so we're doing the exact same thing by cutting the fifty as we're gonna do for not taking care of these buildings. But again, it's not our fault. Unless you voted for the four percent.
Have you, have we always spent the three hundred full on that line, Betsy? We have, okay. Right. Okay.
And, and I assume that million-dollar manifest has quite a bit that goes to this line because it had a paving bill in it. So the eighty-five is no longer even close to what we spent on that line.
Right. Recycling center.
Well, the good news is, we don't have four people working there, so.
Well, we actually just had a resignation. Well, we actually just had a resignation, we're only gonna.
I already knew, I was there on Saturday, I spent an hour and a half there on Saturday, helping out, doing cardboard and putting it in there and working, uh, because there was only two people working there, so. I had some time to kill, so I volunteered for an hour and a half, and I'll probably be back there next Saturday volunteering.
Yeah, we only need.
Everybody loves somebody that works so the town doesn't get paid.
Let the record show that we do not encourage nor do we want volunteers at the recycling.
I understand that, I just figured that. I wanted, I understand the cut, what goes on there, so I could better represent when we come for discussions in the future with how the department works. Getting a little hands-on experience can better reflect on how I make judgments on what we need for that department. So that's why I was doing it.
So you're saying all five selectmen should do the same thing?
Hey, all five selectmen do whatever they feel like they need to do in order to help the town and do the right thing, that's up to them, it's not a.
Yeah, I will be doing the right thing for the town by staying away from it.
We all got an opinion, good enough, moving on.
Ben, did you have something you wanted to comment on?
Well, I was wondering if maybe, you know, we're down to two employees there. I mean, I thought we had three.
We did.
My thought, my, I was.
That's if she doesn't call in sick like she does.
Can we, sorry, do we need really four, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
When I was there on Saturday, I literally sat there, and the amount of cardboard that was coming through there, like, that was literally for an hour and a half, I sat there, I went to go outside a couple of times, say hi to people I knew, but I was just shoveling it into that machine, it was amazing, I didn't think people recycled nearly as much as they did. And then I was, the guy behind me was loading up the big plastic where he's crushing all the plastic, and he was going like crazy too, and then wait. There was nobody to actually even sit out to patrol to the behalf of some people who loved that out there, you know, because he wasn't, no one's standing around, because it was a free-for-all.
So you need four people.
Well, if you don't want to, I mean, you could have easily dumped whatever electronics you wanted to and went away, you, because there was just not enough eyes to see what was going on. So, there was the good enough people that were actually coming in that knew enough to pay, but for the people that don't want to pay and feel like they don't need to, there's plenty of opportunities to do. I saw a guy come over with a heaping truck full of stuff, and, you know, there was nothing, there was nobody there to do anything about it, I wasn't about to go up and tell the guy, I don't work there, but.
Saturday's our busiest day.
Saturdays you definitely need, I probably get away with two on Monday through Friday, but I haven't worked on Monday, I mean, a Friday or a Thursday, I don't know what it's like, so. I'm off this Friday, maybe I'll go there.
All hands on deck on Saturdays and maybe cut back one on the other day, we're only open three days a week.
Right, but you're gonna find somebody who works one day a week?
Oh, you never know, college kid, you never know. Just throwing some ideas out there.
College kids don't want to do that.
They're just gonna waste their parents' money.
They can make money as social influencers.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, they'll take pictures of their feet, never mind.
I mean, John just volunteered every Saturday, so I mean.
No, I didn't volunteer, I'm just trying to do what's, never mind.
Let's move on to general assistance.
This is an amazingly low budget for a town this size.
Services? Social services?
Again, you know, it's a terrible thing, but, I mean, there's no fair way to cut one thing out of here without cutting them all, so either we leave it the way it sits, or.
Put them all in warrant article.
Again, it's, you know, you can, again, I can throw out tons of different opinions on it, because, you know, we're stuck between a hard space here, this is what I dreaded from the beginning, but somebody's gonna sac, somebody's gonna have to sacrifice in town.
If we put them in a warrant article and it fails, then no means no.
That's it.
And then if we need to be able to provide services to, you know, say ReadyRides, if we had put it in a warrant article, we would not be able to do that.
Right.
If you can provide some kind of a summary or something that gives us a sense of how many people in town use those services, that would be helpful.
We should get a letter from these people, we asked about that on budget last year, it's supposed to, by law, possibly submit a letter every year saying, like, this is what we're asking for.
Yeah, they do. All right.
I don't think it's law, but it is custom.
Uh, rec department. Go.
342, scholarship hardship, rec department, eleven thousand dollars. So it was a new item last year that we just, or it's in the proposed budget for this year, so guess what?
Last year it came out of welfare.
Well, we might not have it in welfare to give, but.
What was that, eleven hundred?
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand.
So you cut that?
Sure.
Well, they've been doing it, well, do you want to put the eleven back into welfare?
No.
You don't want to help the kids?
Oh, I want to help the kids. I'm not saying help the kids, just plenty of people who can help the kids.
You want to pick on the kids?
Hey, you're gonna kick on the kids, you're gonna pick on the old people, you're gonna pick on, again, I said this is not anything to do, that's.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, that's.
This is trying to meet what the town people voted for, and if they have better ideas, they're more than welcome to come up and give it to them, but they don't seem like that's happening.
So.
So I'm just saying, take the eleven off.
That's line 342.
Yep.
So I just want to, again, reiterate.
We're not, we're not, these aren't finalized.
Exactly.
These are suggestions right now to see where we can come up with a number.
And we can use these numbers to kind of see where that puts us, right, but, and I would want to give Courtney the opportunity to speak to it again because of how much she's doing and how many people she's impacting.
She's doing an absolutely incredible job with what she has, and anything we take away from her is just a tragedy for the people in town. It is actually the worst possible thing that we can do, but because of what we're, situation we're stuck in, because of what the people voted for in their four percent budget, this is what has to happen in this time of day that we're in, so blame the four percent. I'm just doing what I have to, sorry.
How do you feel about the tax cap?
I just want you to know. But I'm doing what I'm supposed to do.
I hear you, I hear you.
So line 332? Seven thousand and the seventeen.
What's a seven thousand for?
Seven thousand is the lifeguards. Seventeen thousand is that part-time, uh, facilities maintenance position.
Well, yeah, I mean, that is also an area where, again, I go back to, let's look at the maintenance across, you know, and I don't see that as something that should have to be out of the rec department per se, I think we should be looking, not at a part-time person for one department, but, I mean, we, we agree on this, we talked about it before.
I mean, do you want us to create a line in town buildings for the seventeen thousand position? We can do that, because it really should be town-wide, I'll agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't help us budget-wise, and it's not seventeen part-time person probably isn't going to be able to cover us for, if we're, if we're doing across departments, we, or we would need a full-time person.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. Right, and we would have to make, well, this is down the road, if that ever comes to fruition, we have to make clear that that person is strictly for maintenance and upkeep and what have you, not being pulled off doing other things.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's down the road.
So, so are you cutting twenty-four thousand out of that line, 332?
Mm-hmm.
I do firmly believe we do need a maintenance person for the buildings.
Oh, absolutely.
I absolutely support what everybody said, I understand the budget issue, but.
Yeah, I mean, part of it is we can't find anybody, right?
Well, not if we paid somebody, but if we want to offer somebody a very minimum wage to do something on a part-time basis, you need to basically find somebody that's retired, that's in decent shape, that actually will do it as a part-time gig, so they don't have to worry about their pension or anything getting, or their social security getting taxed on by making too much money, so we're asking to find a needle in a haystack, in my opinion.
So, um, one other question, line, um, 338? Marston Field, fifteen thousand for mowing? Full of money for mowing. That covers all of that? Okay, all right.
Can you have, can you make sure that the narrative is updated so that it reflects that? Thank you.
Yes, it looks like it's just one.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hey, have you not been on to the grass is like carpet?
Yeah.
Um, the one I wondered about was 340, um, and I know, I know, I mean, I know Courtney knows all this, so I'm assuming that, I'm assuming I know what the answer is, but can any of those programs be covered under rec department impact fees? Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. John, anything on rec department?
I, oh, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking, I, I don't see how impact fees will cover, you said line 340?
Yeah.
Those are all programming, I think, I think the impact fees would most likely only cover, you know, infrastructure, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's look it up and see, I'm just.
Are, are those, so is 340 offset, no, it's not offset by any revenue.
Yeah, I don't think impact fees can go to pay for salary, from what I remember was, it was for, like, you couldn't even fix the roof with impact fee, you know, but you can put an addition on with an impact fee, but you can't do, if the windows needed replaced, you can't do that with impact fees, it's only for new, uh, stuff that we haven't done before.
Yeah.
You can't make, you can't do any. Even for everything, for, it doesn't matter if the fire department or whatever, you know, the fire department was new, and the impact was fee was over, so that was allowed.
Yep.
Because we're, but you can't.
Oops, my computer just died.
So there's difference, um, this is a list, you know.
Um, the only reason I was asking was because I was thinking about, due to the increased number of people in town, her programs have had to expand and have gotten bigger, so that, it was just an angle I was trying.
I, I think you might have been able to use it for Marston Field because you're expanding your infrastructure, but you, I find it difficult to believe you can use it for additional staff to run a program or something like that, I don't know, we'll find out.
Sorry, John, I want to ask just about, I know you said something about people coming up here, um, like, the van stand, they have five thousand dollars to repair a van stand, what if it's to refurbish and expand the van stand and you put a small addition on it and then you can claim that it serves more people?
Well, one thing you don't want to get is probably trying to defraud on how we're doing projects.
Yeah.
Because then we could get into a legal battle, and the five hundred thousand dollars, whatever we were saving, could get screwed.
If you actually expand.
Well, that, that, that can be how you look at it, but somebody else can look at it differently, we've had things in the past that people thought was a good idea, then other people in town didn't, and then a lawsuit came about, and you probably get where I'm going with this, and you see how it didn't work out for anybody, so.
But thank you for asking that question.
But thank you, Tom, yeah, absolutely, thanks for bringing up something besides.
I think new and bigger might work, but just, uh, it becomes a degree, how much is it expanding?
Yeah, I mean, what's the cost to replace it, because five thousand is quite a bit.
Well, my.
You want to do it right.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up, because I wanted to mention that I think we should take that five K out.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Not that I don't think we shouldn't have a nice van stand.
What line was that?
Um, it was in, uh, 338.
I don't want, I literally was just thinking that same thought, my mom finds out we killed her benefit for her summer concert series, she's gonna probably look at me going, what are you doing? I know, I'll figure out that wrath later when she gets home, but she ain't coming home for a while, so don't worry about it.
So, right, so that's the headline for the article, Steve?
Yes.
Yeah.
John Moran disappoints mom, again, again. All right, anything for library, guys?
Uh, I, I mean, the library came in and they're already under, but, I mean, I don't really know what to cost when they're actually looking for, they're looking to keep their head afloat with what they're doing.
They did a good salary survey study, you know, to justify what they're doing on salaries.
Right, and it's terrible that we can't give them more for what we're asking for, what they're producing.
Conservation commission?
Oh, yeah. Monitoring money? Um, the Marston Woods kiosk for nine hundred dollars, that can go, in my opinion, the signs, um, for Tuckaway River, stay protected for the 250, that can go away, uh, trail development, we could take at least two hundred and fifty dollars off that. Because, you know, it's disturbing the other day, and not to bring up against this, but that I was on, uh, Priest Road the Dump, for the, for the recycling center, right after, they have a trail that you can go off and walk into the woods, but there's no place to park. Unless you're literally parking on the side of the road, which you can't technically park, I don't think, on the side of the road.
So what did you say?
If you can't get all four wheels off.
Was there really a two-car pull-off there?
It's very dangerous.
All right, because.
John, did you say for line 364 to cut it in half?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So that should be budget, I think, for, the proposed budget this year should be only 250 for that trail development, I mean, we could take the 500, but I don't know what trails they're doing or how they maintain the trails, because we're not cutting any trees or branches down, so.
Is, is the line 362 for SIPC or for the kiosk? It sounds quite different depending upon which end of the line you're on.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Well, unless that's who they're paying, who makes the sign for them.
Could be.
Is what they're referring to? But maybe somebody could be nice and donate their own sign or the thing for that, so.
Yeah, it's hard to know how it got there.
Okay.
So you're taking nine hundred out?
Yep.
Well, I'd like to, then I'd like to see the, the 250 for the.
Yep.
River sign maintenance go to one dollar, you know, instead of making them zeros, make them one dollar, trail development, I wouldn't even mind that goes to one dollar instead of 500.
Oh, I thought you wanted half of that.
Yeah, but if we're gonna go, I'll just go for 500 now and maybe go back to 250.
Okay.
You're taking four hundred and ninety-nine out of that line?
Yep.
Okay, um, anybody have anything else?
We're still going to work on public, don't we?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, next step on, on budget, so we've got some asks of Betsy, we've got some asks of John, I think what we want to do is, like, take all of this and kind of model out what it would look like if we made all these cuts.
Yeah, somewhere in the eighty, mid-eighties.
All right.
Not bad for an hour, I'll take it.
Still got a long way to go. Sure, why not? We don't need to be home before one.
Hi, Thomas McKevich, two Washington Lane, um, thank you for taking the tax cap seriously, I just had a couple of suggestions, um, one, I noticed that throughout the budget, there's a lot of postage costs, I don't know what the total is throughout all this, but it's gotta be a few thousand.
We talked about that.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if the town can't do some sort of opt-in paperless billing or paperless notification system, I saw, just quick Google, that the town of Moltenboro also uses Avatar, and that they have an opt-in billing for tax bills and things like that, so maybe if people can set, if residents can set up, look, you can notify me at this email address instead of mailing me anything, that's a potential way to save a good amount of money and paper, um, and then also, um, if the town has not been set up in GuideStar yet, that would be good, it's hard to raise money online for a nonprofit or a government entity when they're not set up in the GuideStar database, which is what a lot of the crowdfunding places use to approve you as a place that we can collect money for, that we don't have to charge as much overhead or something like that, so I just searched for Nottingham and GuideStar, and they have Nottingham Food Pantry, Nottingham Youth Association, Historical Society, Fire and Rescue, uh, Community Church, and, uh, that's about it, but if the town gets set up in there, then fundraisers can be run for things like rec programs and stuff, and then people in town can voluntarily contribute to those and raise money for programs. and raise money for programs that might get cut. So, just a thing to get them set up. It's just GuideStar.
GuideStar.
Yep, and I already contacted them. They're, they do, you know, certify town governments and libraries and things like that. It's easier to just do it for the town, so it covers anything in the town.
Okay, do we have any other public business?
I'm all set.
All right, I will take a motion to go on to non...
Chief, did you have something to ask us while you were here? You just...
Watching on TV and I...
You just felt like coming to join it?
Because it got awful.
All right. I was, I just didn't know I had 10 o'clock here, but perfect, thank you.
Uh, Betsy?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
You're awful. You're awful. Night.
I need to mo, I need a motion to go into non-public.
I don't know.
I make a mo, what's RSA?
A and, what is it, reputation, C or D?
C and A?
No, um, A and, um, I think it's C and, I don't think we need legal.
A and C.
Reputation.
Okay.
Reputation and personnel.
Perfect. I make a motion, uh, for the Board of Select, go into non-public for RSA 91 dash A, colon, uh, colon 3, uh, A and C.
Second.
Roll call.
Hi, Ben Barlet.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Donna Danus. Board will now go into non-public. Once we are done with the non-public, we will come out of non-public and then close the public meeting, and hopefully that will be before midnight.
Oh, yeah, we should be sure.
Yeah. Thank you, Lorraine.
Thanks, Lorraine.